Did I record you?
All right. Ready to go. Good evening, welcome to the Town in Litchfield Board of Selectmen's meeting for December 23rd. We'll all rise with a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board is just coming out of paperwork review. First up is review of items for consent. Within the consent folder tonight, we have payroll for forty-three thousand fifty dollars and sixty cents. Accounts payable for forty-nine thousand three hundred and seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. The minutes from December ninth, ninth meeting. Land use tax, land use change tax. Map ten, lot seventy-seven dash one, dash five. Veterans tax credit application, there's two of them in there. Application for Heron Drive and maintenance bond for Heron Drive. Acceptance of Heron Drive and maintenance bond for Heron Drive. Poll permit. Jason, we're recording, we've just not gone live. Accept permit, poll permit for Comcast, Charles Brinkoff Highway. Reappointment of Erwin Marine as deputy tax collector for boat registrations, boat agent. And an agreement with Erwin Marine. So I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take and remove the poll permit from consent calendar.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the rest. Be approved?
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and approve everything but the poll permit. We'll remove that and we'll discuss that towards the end. For the remaining items, any other, you got a motion for that? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero zero. Again, we'll take up the poll text at the, of the business. Request for items for other business. Anybody else have anything else they want to add to the agenda besides the poll tax? Poll permit, sorry. Hearing none? Nothing else being added to the agenda. Administration report, new business.
Default budget. Share for you to start reviewing. I'm not looking for an approval on this tonight. Passed the default budget. Base is the two thousand thirteen default budget as presented at town meeting. So when you, if you, if you look at numbers, the way that we realigned line items following that vote was an exercise of your ability to adjust and transfer within the bottom line. So I reverted back to what actually made up last year's default budget sort of line item and department basis there. And the sheet I put together, adjustments are shown in the default changes column on the sheet with a total for that default in the last column. So there's usually some questions on certain items. Happy to gather and review those. We can approve at our next regular meeting. Our timetable is we need to provide that number. We need to provide a number at a budget hearing, but ultimately you are the deciding body on it and that number isn't finalized technically till you sign the warrant.
Okay.
Mr. Hope.
Yes.
During the formulation of the proposed default that you have provided us here, last year we had gone through a, several beating, bruhaha over what should be in the default, what should be cut from the default and all of that type of stuff. Have you followed the same rules that we agreed upon last year as far as putting this default together?
No.
Why?
In part because the numbers from last year's default were, are one step removed from the budget we were working on this year. So, you know, I reverted to, the law says one time expenses go in and are removed contractual obligations. So I followed that, that directive. Now, things that were obvious changes in direction, I did, you know, I took those out. The place, the place where we have viewed, viewed some things differently sometimes is when the board has made a policy decision for the coming year and wanting to incorporate that in the default budget.
Mr. Chairman, tonight, we are not being expected to approve or to really consider this as an item on the agenda other than it's being presented to us. But the situation's going to be, if I'm not mistaken, that our next regularly scheduled meeting is going to be in, is going to be the thirteenth. And we're gonna need that for our meeting, the budget hearing, which will be on what date?
Do you remember what the?
It's that week, so it's either the fourteenth or the sixteenth. It's the Tuesday or Thursday of that week.
Sixteenth is the last day that can.
So the point in bringing this up and the point of the matter is that if we do not address the issue that I just raised tonight, we're gonna be in a situation on the thirteenth where we're gonna be proposing changes to the default budget. And we will either have to have a meeting just prior to the budget hearing to approve it or a meeting, or approve it that night.
So, yep. So Jason, I'm confused by your answer.
Okay.
It's just 'cause I'm lost in the semantics. And Mr. Byron's probably asking the question 'cause he probably knows something.
How would I know something?
See something that maybe is, last year, we established a budget based on a budget that was approved by the residents. That was a, you know, a defined budget, so the formula was easy. We made adjustments based on changes that year in expenses when we lowered things. My example is, we didn't need, we didn't need ten pencils anymore, we needed one pencil. We did that. Those changes are not reflected in this default budget. You're using, you're using last, the budget we worked on this year, no, the default that we worked on from last year.
The default you brought forward last year and then the, the sort of the narrow, the narrow changes from one time, one time items and contracts going forward. And it's a little trickier because the budget that we've actually used through this year on a line item budget is different, has different allocations in those lines.
Right, 'cause after the default was approved, after we were, we received defaults as our operating budget, the board relabeled out accounts to make sure that we were able to achieve certain things. Bottom line stayed the same.
My personal point of view is I agree with Mr. Hope's use of the default budget per line item as presented to the voters last year. I don't have a problem with that.
Right, right.
What I have a concern about, and again, I have not gone through this in detail, but will, you can anticipate that I will, is that we should be following the same policies and procedures we set out as a board last year to arrive at the two thousand fourteen default budget. Even though we're starting off utilizing a prior default budget as the basis. So to the point that you raised, Mr. Chairman, a moment ago, such as last year we bought ten pencils, I like to say a hundred pencils, but ten pencils is fine.
That's easy, yeah.
And we're only gonna use one pencil, or I like to say ten pencils. This year, we should be decreasing the pencil budget by ninety pencils or.
I mean, I fully anticipate.
And this is, and, right, and this is the disagreement we have each year because when we shift from pencils to, you know, I, any number that goes down, we have built into the way you've wanted the default budget calculated. Any number that goes up, when I decide I'm moving from pencils to erasers, I get last year's erasers at a low number and I get fewer pencils. So the, the approach that's been taken goes down. Now again, I'm gonna look for the same direction this year, 'cause if you recall last year, my professional judgment and the advice of counsel was to not do that. You gave me a different directive. So if you wish me to do that again, I just wanna make sure I get that from the board, that, you know, recorded, that that's the way you would like the default budget calculated. Because I'm not gonna go out and do that on my own that way.
Can you, and I'm not sure whether Mr. Bork was on the board at the time or not, last year when we did this. I don't think he was.
He wasn't.
So it may make sense to review what those rules were that we used last year just so that everybody has them fresh in their mind. My memory's good, but it's very short.
Yeah, okay, well here, I have, I have a real simple example, 'cause I pulled up, I pulled up, this is sort of a simple number where, that shows the disagreement. On the zoning board budget. Prior year, their books and periodicals line was sixty-five dollars. Okay? So that was the number that gets carried forward in the default. Now, their proposed budget for the coming year in that line is sixteen dollars. So.
These are not rules.
So using your approach, you've decided that the proposed budget then becomes the new default number in that line rather than the previously carried forward number. With the perception is, is that, okay, we're gonna call that prior sixty-five dollar level, the difference in sixty-five and the sixteen, we're gonna call that in the one time purchase line. Now, on the other hand, if they had said, I'm buying fewer books, but I'm buying more stamps, I'd be stuck with last year's stamp number. It'd be, the sort of the trading between lines as priorities change, we decided not to follow. But anyplace where we said, hey, here's a line that's gone down, we took the lower number from the proposed budget and put it into default budget. The theory being, okay, well, yeah, I don't need sixty-five dollars for books this year because I only want sixteen, so why should I ask for more? And so on a line basis, that logic makes sense. The problem is if there's any exchange between lines, we don't have a mechanism to contemplate that. And that's sort of the essence of where the disagreement has been. And the board's preference last year was to say, hey, if we've proposed a line that's going down somewhere, don't take the higher number from last year, take our new proposed number instead.
Correct.
And the dilemma, of course, is there is one sentence in state law explaining what the default budget is. And so there's limited meaningful guidance or reference out there. So that's where, that's why we have a disagreement about this.
I'm assuming all the tabs represent the balancing you did to come up with those numbers for each account, right?
Mm-hmm.
In the past?
Yep.
So I guess I would strongly recommend the board, board members to review that compared to what we've approved. You know, focusing maybe on looking at the bottom line also, as far as those accounts go. And we, if it's on the sixteenth, we're not meeting again until?
The thirteenth.
I mean, we could, if we think this is gonna bog us down, which our intents and purposes could, you know, we could do a meeting on the sixth, just focus on default. That's the only action I have on the thing, go minimum and hammer out the defaults that gives us a little bit of time, if that makes sense. I don't know how everybody else feels, but. 'Cause I do, I know we got into a long lengthy discussion. If we're gonna be up against the wall for the sixteenth meeting and actually, I know the Budget Committee is anxious to see what the fault looks like. Obviously they have no authority there, but they're interested in looking at it. It is live on the side, they can look at it anytime they want. But it would be nice to know that come the thirteenth, we know it's gonna get, we're gonna have a vote on it and it's approved versus.
What else do you anticipate that's gonna be on the agenda of the thirteenth?
Thirteenth is too far from me at this point. I don't think, do we have any, I don't think we have anything standing on the thirteenth yet as far as regular business, but.
No, I have nothing else yet, but, you know, things can happen between now and then. You know, I mean, if you punt any discussion on non-monetary warrant articles, obviously we'll, we need to be wrapping those up for the end of January.
Goal is to get the warrant articles done tonight.
Right, exactly. But, you know, if you shelve something there, but.
I mean, I like to hold, I would like to hold the sixes reserved if we have to do it, but I guess it all depends on what kind of feedback we get. Go ahead.
I'm not necessarily comfortable totally with what we did last year unless we correspondingly, if there is a contractual increase, make sure that the account is increased accordingly. I understand exactly what Mr. Hope is saying, that, you know, there is a potential to bind departments by one time deductions like that. And if you don't counter it.
You know, I, I think that, to answer your question, the board last year made a decision that if you have a contract, then you obviously put the stipulation of the contract into that default budget. That's, goes without saying. And if that's an increase, it's an increase. So for example, we have a contractual agreement with Penetra. I'm using, I'll use an example.
Yeah, right.
That requires us to pay them a maintenance fee for the hydrants. That is going to go up next year, and I think we'll be discussing that later in the meeting, by a significant amount. And I think that obviously in the default budget, you have to put that in there because we're contractually allocated.
So we, you know, I know that in my experience with it, we put your contractual items, your items, your utilities increases, and the items that were approved and continuously funded, we make sure that those items are in the default because you're allowed to do that. Because it was never the intent, and when the attorneys explained it to us, it was never the intent to bind a town to make it so that they couldn't operate. But yet there was no explanatory judgment, exactly how to do the default, on purpose because of the variables that are in there every year. So, okay. Well, we can take a look at it and.
I mean, I, looking at what we budgeted, the default is the basis in looking at what we budgeted this year. I think we should, it should be a comparison of both. Where it's legally correct to do something, we probably should do it. And where it's, you know, if it's a reduction, it's a reduction, but.
'Cause the council looks at this and, and, you know, you get gun-shy after a while because, you know, everybody has a different opinion as to the way it's supposed to go, and so, you know.
I just, I don't think we can, well, I mean, with the, with the cost, what the costs are, operating at a, operating at a default, well, maybe not. All right. So we'll vote, we'll vote it on the thirteenth. My suggestion would be is if the noise is there, we'll do something earlier, but we'll take it on the thirteenth. And if we have to stay to three hours and not, we'll stay the way hours and not till we hammer it all out.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, you, when you take a look at it, you'll see, I mean, obviously, you know, most of these are gonna be fairly straightforward. Either you consider something one time or you don't, you know, you consider a change one time or you don't consider a change one time. Ultimately, that's, that's where we're gonna have the disagreement. Contractual stuff's easy.
And where I, where I looked at it this afternoon, it looked like we did take reduces where we took reductions and there were some increases where we may have taken a reduction in the budget, but that's, but based on fulfills the guideline you have, or the guideline you wanna follow. So, all right.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Again, it's, it really does, you know, open it up, take a look at it compared to what we've working on today. All right, anything else on the default? Okay, Albuquerque use and speed.
Selectman Lemire passed along a note, I think, last week that he had noting a citizen concern, sort of feeling that on the north end of Albuquerque, seeing an increase in traffic and speed and particularly kind of the challenge of being a pedestrian out there and sometimes getting from one side to the other, to go from a house to bike path. And asking us to contemplate what strategies may be possible to deal with that. So, kick this around a little bit with police, yeah?
If I can interject one thing. This is, this is the one, this is one citizen that wrote us an email. There is, I've also received comment and feedback from several, several other citizens who use the north end of Albuquerque. So the, the issue around speed is, is common across all. The crossing issue, those, that aspect didn't come in any of the conversations, but speed has been a concern. So that's all I want, I just want to make sure people realize it's not just.
Yeah, that's.
There's been several complaints that have come in.
Couple things, just for some context. Police Department has done some additional directed patrols in that area based on concerns about speed. Chief gave me some data through the nineteenth. Now, you know, unfortunately, we tag those incidents, if we have a stop, we tag it on Albuquerque. So understand that with, you know, the numbers I'm giving you are the entire length of Albuquerque. They're not gradated out through, across it. But from, so for that, that time period of the eleven and a half months, they had three hundred sixty-eight vehicle stops along Albuquerque, two hundred thirty-eight warnings, ninety-four summons, thirty-one arrests. So, you know, there is a reasonable level of activity there. The citizen that passed this comment along noted also, you know, some trees that may be obstructing some visibility at the intersection with April. We've talked, we talked about potentially adding a crosswalk there and an associated warning sign package to support it. So there is kind of a clearer way across. Trick on that is to actually think about it a little bit. We might need to make some adjustments to some of the other pavement markings or add some extensions on the bike path. If you just drop a crosswalk in, it's path to nowhere because the bike path's set back on one side and there's sort of nothing on the other side. You can navigate around it, but that's.
Right, and if you put a bike path at April, you, I mean, if you put a crosswalk at April, what about the other roads?
Exactly. Right. You know, what, going kind of further up the food chain, you know, alert, additional speed alert signs, you know, are possible. One of the ideas that had mentioned was an electronic speed display sign, so you kind of mount it with the speed limit sign and it has the, it has like the built-in radar and so it says, you know, it flashes your speed is. I spoke with the police chief in Plastow, they put a couple in at the edges of their village area in his senses that they do affect driver behavior in those areas. You know, they have a price tag probably installed, you're looking at about eight thousand dollars.
For two of them? North facing, south facing?
One.
One?
For one. The, you know, and now you sort of get the problem when you have somebody that has a planning background sitting here. You know, part of, part of my sense is that some of this is simply a design issue. From north of Bristol, Albuquerque is relatively open, straight road with wide open shoulders. And so the sort of the functional speed based on that design in that section is gonna be higher than the speed thirty-five posted. All of the things that you see visually, both as a driver, as a pedestrian, enhance the feeling of speed, if you're a pedestrian, and your actual speed, if you're a driver. So, you know, from an engineering point of view, it would actually, the thing that would be, the discussion point would be raising the speed to, that it's appropriate for that section of road, which I realize is completely opposite what has been asked, so I'm not really recommending that. But, you know, the design leads to a higher speed. Alternatively, you could look at some design elements to reduce the speed. Some signs, more police resources may help incrementally, but my sense is both will have limited impact. From a design, design sense, one of the things you might wanna think about, and again, it's gonna take a little longer to get to a resolution, is planting some trees in that town right of way as a relatively low-cost solution. With that sense of enclosure, speed should go down. I did, I passed along a report that I've used in the past with street trees lowering speed limits anywhere between thirteen and fifteen miles per hour. You know, given the other uses of the road, I mean, some other things that can be done. I've put in medians in the past and other such things, I think, that make people come unbinged if you looked at that. So, some food for thought. I mean, obviously the construction things, the signs, pavement markings are something that we'd wanna look at come spring. But wanted to kind of kick off the discussion and sort of give you a handful of options to think about.
So before I, before all this came up, I had always thought the speed limit on that end of Albuquerque was too low. Because being a travel freak, frequent traveler of that road, it is, it does lay out to be a lot faster. But ultimately, you know, there are folks who use the road, they feel it's unsafe because of the speed. Even though the bike path is set way far off the road, there are, the perception is, there's, it's a drag race going on down there. So, probably should look at doing something. Mr. Byron, do you have a question or statement?
Yes.
Please proceed.
The easiest thing to do in my mind would be to put in a crosswalk there, even though it goes across from one side of Albuquerque with the bike path on it to April Drive. We have bike, we have crosswalks all of the time, so it's not an issue. The other thing I would do is you can buy them and they should be relatively inexpensive, is put down, basically, you see them in cities quite frequently, they put them down on the yellow line. It's a pole that has a marker on it that says, you know, yield to pedestrians. That restricts the available lane width, if you wanna call it that, and basically slows people down. Rather than put up eight thousand dollar traffic signs or do all types of fancy stuff, that's probably the cheapest way out. Jack should be able to put those in next spring sometime. Just have them painted onto the road and we'd be, it should have some effect on the traffic flow. I wouldn't recommend that we get into chicanes or other types of traffic calming activities that planning people are wont to throw at you.
My only question is, if we're gonna construct a crosswalk at April, why wouldn't we do one down the south end by the, the park also?
Or across Bristol.
At the park where the, where's the park?
Litchfield, Litchfield Park, the soccer fields. Not talent, up, right up around the side of Hillcrest. The New Fields, yeah.
Why not? You do it, go ahead.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, if you, if you're gonna construct one crosswalk with a sign.
You have one right out here.
Yep. Across, right across here in Hillcrest, correct.
I mean, where's the crosswalk going to?
That was always my thought, I thought you couldn't have a crosswalk when she had someplace else to go.
Right, the only thing, you have a crosswalk, it would be going into a street.
If you, no matter where you go, there you are. I mean, what's the difference? You can have a crosswalk go anywhere.
Sure, but it is, the terminating point is either in the middle of the street or not a walkway, not a public way. So I mean, you're, you're basically fooling people because they're not crossing to anywhere that has a crosswalk.
They're not crossing anywhere that has.
In other words, you're, you're putting a crosswalk.
So you're saying you need a sidewalk to put a crosswalk in?
Otherwise, where is that crosswalk going to? You're taking people from the bike path, correct, and bringing them across the street to where?
To the side of the road on April Drive.
But you don't have a sidewalk there and no one walks there.
Which is where they're trying to get to.
Well, that's one example, there's other examples down on White, there's another example down.
It's the same thing that the chairman just raised a couple moments ago about the soccer fields. Where would you, you know, using that same logic, it wouldn't make sense to put a crosswalk in because there's no sidewalk on the other side of Albuquerque.
That was my, that was my next question. If we start constructing sidewalks, I always, I was always under the impression that a sidewalk required another end. But if we're saying that we can dump a sidewalk onto the corner of that road.
Why not?
The corner, you know, the, the shoulder, and that's not gonna be an issue, then, you know, it's only paint. We're talking about a couple of hundred bucks.
If I'm not mistaken, we have that same situation right now down at the high school where we have a crosswalk that I believe goes right across Albuquerque to.
Stark, right?
Goes to Stark, I thought.
Yeah, whatever, one of those streets there.
Well, that's what I'm asking. If you're putting them, if you're going to bring the crosswalk over, I, I'm assuming you're gonna dump it into a street.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you're gonna do it, you want it to kind of go from shoulder to shoulder. So, you know, rather than set back from the intersection going from grassy patch to grassy patch. Yeah.
Well, you want it to go from some high active area, and that could be the, that could be the bike path or it could be, in their case, down south, the high school or whatever. And have it go to a location where people are looking to get. I don't know when those pictures were taken.
Yeah, I don't either, I'm just looking to see, 'cause I think there is one.
I think it's further down, it's at Talent, if I'm not mistaken.
So you said the police chief, they have increased patrols down there?
Yeah, they have.
Yeah, he doesn't have no data saying.
You've got one there, but that's bike path.
I know you have the data.
I have all those, I didn't think we had anything, I didn't think we had any crosswalks.
They, they law, some of the data gives.
Not south.
Lock range for where the incident is, but the majority of it doesn't.
Go down, dude, go down.
So, it just, you know, it often just gets called in and dispatches out on Albuquerque, so.
No, you don't have one.
Yeah, 'cause when we pull. Yeah, so we pulled the report.
See, you only have them going across, that's wasn't the point.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing anything down there, but-
Have we, have we checked?
You only have them with the bike path.
You know those speed trailers, you know the trailers you tow around town, you just put them, they're on places?
Same, same, yeah, same, it's, those are expensive, but-
Oh, they, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, you're-
But I don't-
What, what were the police chief's suggestions?
Um, they were, um, you know, I mean, it, it was, talked about crosswalk and, you know, we talked, and really, it ended up coming back to the, the design issue again. You know, I mean, I, um, and, you know, he kind of kicked around the department too, and that was sort of the conversation, you know, I, you know, and I had with Sergeant O'Donoghue was about that very thing, you know, he was, you know, it feels faster when you're standing out in the open and people don't pass.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and he says, you know, try doing it detail sometime. So, you know, I mean, I think-
I mean, the chief brought up the trailer as an option, but that's, you know, again, we have only X amount of roads and-
Yeah.
Correctly, I don't think we have a overall speed problem in town, well, I shouldn't say that, we probably do, but, um, I just don't see that being a good, good use of money. If we can do something that, uh, because my argument always is whether we put trees up to slow it down or do some kind of visual cue to say, you got to slow down, you know, the folks that drive that regularly will start ignoring it anyway.
The only thing you want to ignore is a cruiser sitting on the side with a radar.
Right, and I think if you look at the stats, I mean, if you look at the stats, they certainly have had quite a few stops in that, on the Albuquerque stretch in general, and, you know, if you look at the southern part of Albuquerque, you really can't get speed, there's too many, it's windy, it's curvy and all that.
I'm sure every single one of us driving, whether it's in, in-town or out-of-town, you always know in the area when you get to a certain part of the town, there's always a cop there.
Yeah.
Right?
Correct, yeah.
So, I mean, I, after a while, if we do put somebody, they're going to say, well, there's always a cop there.
Yeah, maybe we could just ask the chief for special attention in the area to see if they could put additional electric patrols there.
And there has been directed patrols there, but remember, at any given point in time, there's, you know, two. It's a lot of road to be covering for two.
Right.
And, um-
Well, I would say the bulk of it, right, morning, probably morning.
Yeah.
Right? Afternoon, late afternoon.
Probably right at shift change, but, yeah.
And every once in a while, they'll get a highway safety grant for a speed control. Possibly, if he could ask for, um, highway safety money for a couple of funded speed control items on that road.
Well, I mean, we owe, we owe, we owe the one citizen at least a response, you know, as far as what the board's going to do in any kind of corrective action. Um, I believe I already noted that there had been directed patrols, so we have taken an attempt to, to use the assets we have to do it. Beyond that, it doesn't sound like there's an agreement on any of the physical things at this point.
Well, do we have any data that indicates there is a problem?
Well, I-
I mean, we've, I know we've got people who have been stopped for speeding and all that stuff, that's fine. But do we have any data that indicates that what the speed is through there? There were speed studies that were done, which we'll review a little bit later on 102.
Yeah.
Why can't we do the same thing there to determine if there is a problem or not?
I, I think there's a, there's a, there's a assumption, not assumption, but there's a statement that says that, and it's, it's, it's built for forty-five. The speed limit's thirty-five.
Right, but if I'm not mistaken, since it's considered a town street, it's not-
It's thirty-five.
Eligible, it's got to be thirty-five. Because if it were a state road, then it can be forty or forty-five, but it is not.
Well, I wasn't advocating increase, I'm just saying, the way, the way it's built, yeah.
Well, absolutely, because I re, I recall when they first started building that, that the original intention, and if I'm not mistaken, Pat, you can correct me, wasn't the original intention, was it someday asking the state to switch, that Litchfield would take over three A and have the state take over Albuquerque? This was before you, Frank.
I think the-
This was the Edward Roy days.
I've never heard of that.
Well, that was before you, Frank.
I know, but I would suspect that people would have brought it up one of the times.
No, but they, they said no, I mean, but it was-
When I came to the board, Albuquerque wasn't complete.
Well, I know that, it was, it was chopped up, but the, originally, when they started building, the first section was, I believe, between Pinecrest and, um, Talent, down in there. And the, one of the, I was at a meeting where one of the, in, the suggestions was that once it was completed, that they'd ask to switch, have the state take it over, and it was built for state specs. It was built for forty-five. Uh, I remember it definitely being built for forty-five miles an hour, but as long as it's, you know, if it's a town road, it's thirty-five.
I can remember them saying that it was going to cost a lot to repair, uh, Hillcrest, and so if we switched, it was going to cost us a lot of money because-
Oh, that's why they didn't do it, yeah.
Yeah.
There were a lot of ancillary problems with doing that.
Yeah.
Because three A wasn't constructed as a road in the beginning anyway.
Yeah.
And then, at that point, they said that we would have to assume the, the maintenance of three A, which would have been twice as costly as Albuquerque.
Can we, can we get on the traffic study schedule for the spring?
Sure.
I know we can't during the winter time because those things get ripped up, but-
Yeah, I mean, I, we can do it, I mean, and I think it's fine, but I mean, I think it's, it's, we'll get some numbers, but my sense is, it's going to validate what we're all saying here.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you're going to find an average speed of forty-five.
Right.
You know, I'm not sure what your volume's going to be, but you're not going to necessarily have a context to-
Can we put, I mean, versus crosswalks, right, but can we put a sign in the middle of the median, in, at the yellow line that says, you know, watch out for pedestrians?
The problem is snowman, it's, you know, reply.
Well, snowman's the pain, yeah.
But you, you can put, um-
Because seeing a sign in the middle of the road is going to make you slow down anyway, just because you're not sure you want it.
Again, that gets you back to kind of the design issue, you know, with, you know, if I had my way, I'd put a median in there anyway, which would get it down. But, the sign is the warning for that. Off the top of my head, I don't know, I'm happy to check and see if, you know, I've always seen them associated with crosswalks, I'm not sure if there's just sort of a pedestrian zone-type sign there, they're usually sort of-
There is, it's usually a square sign, which is on edge, tilted, that says caution.
Oh, yeah, no, but I've never seen one-
But that's not going to do anything unless you put it-
Mid, I've never seen that mid-street. You can put all the signs you want on the shoulder.
Right, if you put a mid-street sign, someone's going to-
Yeah, you can put all the signs you want on the shoulder, but I, the mid-street sign, but I mean, I think actually, that may be coupled with a sidewalk, a crosswalk, is the kind of thing to look at, I mean, come spring, and see, you know, can we make, make, make a crosswalk work there and then have something marked with that sort of mid-street sign.
I really think we should defer to the police chief and ask him for suggestions. He's responsible for control.
Well, he is, but I, he, I don't believe he believes there's a speed, I guess, I-
Well, we don't know that, he isn't here.
Based on the data, well, based on the data, I mean, we know there's stuff going on on that road and it's being, being addressed.
Well, before we do anything, let's ask him. Let's refer that to him and ask him for a reply.
I'd like, I have two, two thoughts, yeah, let's, let's ask chief, uh, let's ask chief directly what he believes if there's a speed problem. Obviously, we have those statistics, we don't know which end of Albuquerque those are. Maybe conscious decision first of the year, they, they note the cross street at all the stops, so we know where it is. Um, and I know they can do that now, the system that was updated, so that should be not a problem. And then, um, let's ask, let's ask, let's ask the road agent, if he, how, what, what he suggests to, um, to control speed a little bit down that way. And if it's crosswalks, great, but I would like to see, I, I personally would not want to see one crosswalk constructed, I'd like to see probably maybe three at very different locations where we have a lot of people that would potentially be crossing over.
Well, I, I agree, but I, I really think we got to determine if there is a problem, and in order to do that, we got to ask the police chief. And once we get that information-
Anecdotally, the chief had really, he, he did not agree, he had not indicated a problem one way or the other, he's aware of this conversation, we've had several conversations about it.
Yeah.
And, you know, we talked about speed signs and visual cues and the trailer and all that. Nothing was ever stated whether it was really, whether there is a real issue up that way.
Right.
So, let's get the answer from him.
Okay.
All right, anything else on Albuquerque? Hearing none, moving on. Let's, let's talk about tires and we'll go to public input. So, tires.
Yep. Selectman Byron had passed along a question about tire disposal charges solid waste facility. Wondering if the fact that we charge a fee is causing abandonment of some tires by people wanting to avoid those fees. Over the past year, you probably had ten, twelve, um, abandoned tires at various locations. Uh, Dave Mellon passed along that we collect and recycle about four hundred tires each year. We charge two dollars per tire, and, um, he has not experienced complaints about the charge or the check-only policy. With the small exception of people who will be upset about any charge for anything, you know, it's, the majority of people know, they've seen it with their, um, in an auto shop. Um, he noticed that, you know, our charge is less than most businesses are charging. Uh, he, he doesn't recommend any change at this time. He also expressed a concern that if we contemplated eliminating the charge, it may actually lead to a greater number of tires being brought to the facility. Uh, pointed out, you know, right now, we charge two bucks and most businesses, if you go to a shop and get them changed, they're charging like three or four.
Three fifty, yeah.
Yeah. Um, you know, I think we're always going to have people throwing some stuff out for convenience.
It's not just tires, though.
It's tires, it's beer cans, it's beer bottles, it's fast food wrappers, it's, yeah.
So, Mr. Byron, you, you raised this to the board. Um, I know, I know you've noted three, I think it was three tires in the last month or so. What, what was your intention as far as?
My understanding going into this, and I think even my discussion with Jason, I thought that the fee was around ten dollars a tire.
Uh-huh.
And apparently, that is incorrect, and it is actually two dollars a tire. Although, did you check what the town website says in terms of the town?
Uh, no, I haven't, but it's insane.
Because I, it could be the ten dollars I'm thinking of is actually for removal of the freon from refrigerators.
Yeah, that would be refrigerators and air conditioners for ten dollars.
And stuff like that. So, but anyways, my, my concern was that we are seeing tires spread pretty much all over town. Uh, there's been, I don't know how many, Jason, probably four or five, that we've had up at the conservation area that have been left in the parking lot of the conservation area. There's been several spread all over the roads and stuff like that, and, um, it was enough so that I noticed it and felt that, uh, if there was an issue with the fees, then maybe we need to consider whether we should reduce the fee to make it more agreeable for people to bring them in, but it sounds like that that's, um, not the case from what Dave said.
I never happen to see them, only when I'm doing cleanup days and stuff like that, and they aren't close to the road, they're back further and all.
They roll off the road.
On purpose, yeah. And it seems to be mainly on Hillcrest, both this end and that end.
Yeah. Well, all the roads leading to the dump, it seems like there's always some kind of debris on the side of the road. Question, what, I, I gather from some of the earlier conversations that the fee we charge is not what we get charged, the, the fee we charge to the residents is not the fee that we get, we have to pay to get rid of the tire. What is our disposal for the tire?
Uh, it moved up to two eighty a tire.
So, we're eighty cents in the hole for every tire that gets brought in.
Right, so, so ultimately, we should be revisiting the fee schedule and contemplating whether we want to kick that up to three dollars. Now, for a while, we were paying below the two dollars. You know, our disposal cost was, was less than that, so.
How about the tires we're getting recycled, so why is the cost going up?
A lot of tires get chopped up and get put into, uh-
And to put it in the ground.
We get nothing back for those, for those tires.
No, we pay to get rid of them.
No, we pay to get rid of them. I mean, some of the, some of the things, that's, that's the deal, we pay to get rid of them, but it's cheaper, that price is cheaper than filling up the landfill, the, uh, the solid waste container and paying, you know, whatever we pay, seventy bucks a ton or whatever to get rid of it.
Yeah, somebody's making something because two ninety-three is paid.
I guess I would, I mean, I guess I would ask, you know, ask Dave, I'm sure he already has, see if there's any other options with the tires, because the fact that we're eighty cents in the hole for every tire, it would, it would seem to suggest, I mean, the goal down there is to break even, right? It's not necessarily to make any money, but we need to break even. So, we're, we're basically passing on for everybody who brings a tire in, eighty cents to the whole, the taxpayer in general, to make up the difference. Um, you know, I'd like to see if there's any other options as far as disposing those tires. If there is, if there isn't, there isn't, but then we can talk about the fee, whether the fee needs to be readjusted or not. Does the, the per tire cost include the hollow?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Because I know, you, you know, I, I think a shop, my, my family shop, I think they do, it's three fifty a tire, you know, and they also pay to pick up the tire, right? So, it's, you know, it's weird. So, definitely, we're definitely cheaper than leaving it at the tire shop.
There we are.
Overall. Okay. Is there any action the board want to take on this? Other than what we talked about? Okay. So, let's, let's see if Dave has any other ideas as far as, it doesn't, I think bottom line, there is not, there's not an issue with the fee, we're, we're certainly getting enough tires in and people are paying the, paying the fee. If we're getting twelve to twenty tires a year on the side of the road, they were never going to make it to the incinerator anyway.
Uh, and, and I think you will see us coming back at some point, hopefully, next couple of months. There's a couple of fees that Dave and I have talked about recalibrating, we have a couple that are, that are too high or-
Right, and we had to wait till the last year to deal with those, so, okay.
So, yeah, we, we have a couple other adjustments to make, there's a couple I think we can lower now.
Okay.
So, imagine that, lower the fees, but, yeah.
All right, anything else on tires? Hearing none, I'm going to open the floor for public input. Little quarter of eight, no, quarter of seven, sorry.
Name and address?
Jason Gray, eleven Perry Court. Thank you for the time.
Merry Christmas, Jason.
Merry Christmas, um, all of you. I, I can't believe it's already Christmas, for me, it's been, it's been a bear, but-
First it'll be New Year's, and it'll all be.
Yeah, you work in retail, it's, uh-
Yeah, retail's nuts.
Yeah, then you get snow on top of it. My, my comments tonight regard the default budget, I'm glad it came up this evening. I saw it on the agenda earlier, and I know it, uh, it's a serious, serious issue here in town and there are different ways to look at it. It is one line in the law, it, it's more than one line, but basically, it's a, it's a very short blurb on purpose. It's not intended to be, or wasn't intended to be what we make it to be. When one looks at the history and reads transcripts and how the law became and the, the conversations that were had and conquered, you get a good understanding of what the point was. And the point was not to be concerned about the hurt it causes, it's so that a town can continue. Because if a town under SB two doesn't approve of the budget and didn't have a mechanism by which to go forward, which is the default budget, you would have then no funds to proceed. It's not meant to jockey or move things around or, or anything, because it only exists until the day it's signed, or the form, you know, the day it's formulated and signed off on, until voting day. That's the only time a default budget exists. Because after that, this board, by virtue of a Supreme Court decision out of Hampton, says that that is an, an operating budget and you can do with it what you will. It's no longer a default budget, you can reallocate those funds however you choose. Once you do that, that becomes your new line items. Not last year's, that's done and gone. There is no more operating budget from last year. It's this year's operating budget. So, if you chose to buy ten widgets, that is where your appropriation exists. It's no longer in the, you know, the ten oranges that you bought. You know, so you can't say, well, this week it's magazines and I wanted erasers and last year it was, it doesn't matter. What matters is when you all took the budget that was presented, which ends up being a default budget this year, and turned it into an operating budget, that is the basis by which you start. So, it doesn't matter where or how you've reallocated those funds. From where they originally were, it is what it is. So, I, I thank God it's not complicated, it's just that short amount. That was those notes. What I'd like to do is, just real quickly, because when I, when I sat there in the audience, I, I was left with the feeling that there's still some misunderstanding. It's quite easy, it says, "The default budget as used in this subdivision means the amount of the same appropriations, not services." Appropriations, which means rules money, same amount of money, as contained in the operating budget authorized for the previous year, reduced and increased, it's both, not one or the other, as the case may be by certain things. Debt service, contracts, and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law. So, in other words, it doesn't penalize you if the state says, oh, by the way, now you have to do this or that. Well, everybody understands when the state mandates you to do something, you do it, unless you challenge it under twenty-eight A. But the point is, is it accomplishes that in the law. It tells you that if you're told that something must happen, the default budget doesn't include those monies, but now it does. It tells us that. And for the purposes of this paragraph, one-time expenditures that are not likely to reoccur in a succeeding budget, right, those, those are removed. And that's it. So, it's nice and beautiful and sweet and tidy. The reason it's complicated is because we involve attorneys, and they love to argue, right? And unfortunately, there is no case law in New Hampshire. No one has ever challenged it in, in state law. And that's in New Hampshire how you do it, because the, the Department of Revenue, as we know, has no statutory obligation over it, so they kind of wash their hands of it whenever you ask them of it. And so, unless the legislator, legislature takes it up on their own or someone takes it to court to challenge it, people will continue to fight over something that's not meant to fight over. So, I appreciate the fact that Mr. Byron brought that up this year. It, it says increase and decrease as appropriate. Not because we want to save money to make our lives easier, it's just a position to allow us to continue until the next opportunity to, opportunity to go to the voter and ask them for a proposal of their tax money. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? Hearing none, closing the floor for public input. Proceeding on the agenda of business, warrant articles.
Warrant articles, yes, you will now see a, something that looks a lot like the warrant. Compiled all the articles we've been talking about, sent it off to council, got her input back, made some edits and adjustments to language and purposes. You know, I left some comments, so as we go through, I'll hit, there's, you know, a couple of things that are certainly beyond the substance of is this, do you like this article, not like this article, sort of come out of council's comments to think about. So, first one, road improvement bond. One of the ideas that we talked about, the million dollars for repair and reconstruction of roads.
I thought we had made a decision, we weren't going to go forward with a million dollar bond and would go forward with something different.
When we talked, when we asked them to reconstruct it, we asked them to bring up both so we can make a final decision.
You, you gave me, you asked for several flavors. So, Article two is the bond, it's put there because that has to go first. Skip over the budget, go down to Article four. Then we have four A and B, because there were two strategies here. If you look at four B, this is the sort of if-then one of, of, let's raise the one year, only if, and this article will be only valid if Article two above doesn't pass. Article two being the bond. So, that was one of the suggestions, do the bond, and then do, do the article that says, if you don't vote for the bond, but vote for this, it'll go forward. And then four A is simply the one-year, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars for additional roadwork. It is set up to be non-lapsing. And that should not say until the equipment is purchased, but rather the road, the improvements are done. And we carried it through two thousand sixteen. So, if there's a trailing bit of that, it automatically stays and is available for roadwork. So, those are your alternatives on that, that I think you asked for.
Yep, that's what we did. So, first up is the bond. I mean, I, does this board want to proceed with the bond? I think it's a for yay or nay would be fine, as far as, do we think that's a good direction for us to go?
For a million dollar bond, I'd say no.
Mr. Bork?
I'd say no.
Mr. Lemire?
I like the intent.
Yep.
And... You don't know the impact that that would be, would you?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I, I think I gave you a schedule, it's buried under the road plan page there. Annual payments start at one hundred seventy-one thousand six fifty-seven and decrease to a final payment of one hundred and forty-six nine seventy-one. Cumulative interest over the period's about a hundred and fifteen dollars. I think the point I brought up last time...
Hundred fifteen thousand.
What did I say?
Hundred fifteen.
We're getting a great deal, yeah, how about a hundred and fifteen thousand? Yeah, that's probably more realistic.
You can do it for a hundred and fifteen, I can consider it.
You'll, you'll go, you'll support it.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, and so, you know, the context I had is just over the past seven years, the price of asphalt increased over sixty, sixty percent. So, one of the theories of getting, doing some of it now is you get the cash in hand now, and maybe you get more bang for the buck rather than doing it in smaller pieces. I also did pass along there, I mean, there, when you do a bond, you do have to pay bond counsel. So, the cost of issuing this debt is, the quote I got is between four and seven thousand dollars. So, you know, you are going to have a hit for that, which would go, you can either put in the article or absorb it out of your legal budget.
But you also have to have a financial, uh... Some financial work done as well?
No, it shouldn't be anything beyond what we have. For this, it shouldn't be beyond what we have now, because we would most likely be looking at bank issued debt rather than bond bank issued debt. We kind of compare the...
What's our bonding capacity right now? We have very little bonds out there now.
Right, right.
We don't have many bonds. The town has none. The high school bond has gone away.
Way more than a million dollars, I don't have the, there's a rule of thumb there, but I mean, with no outstanding debt...
And the rates are still pretty low.
Yeah.
So, the, the reason I ask is that if we're going to, if, we're going to spend one hundred and seventy thousand in a straight shot to do roads every year, or one hundred and seventy thousand to pay off the million dollar, which we get the money in hand upfront to do as much as we could, wouldn't it make sense to do the bond versus the one hundred and seventy thousand a year as straight payments?
That's, that's been a discussion, yeah.
I would disagree that it makes sense, and I would disagree from the perspective of the citizens. What you're, and I'm assuming you're going to take a five-year amortization
Yeah, I, I will...
On the bond.
I looked at seven. I looked at seven.
Oh, is it seven?
Yeah, I took seven.
Right.
Okay, so if you look at seven years, what you've basically done now is locked in the citizens of the town, future boards of selectmen, to spending one hundred and seventy thousand dollars every year for each and every year, all the way out through seven years. And I think it's better if you're going to do that and want to spend one hundred and seventy dollars. Now, I'm saying...
It's contagious.
Because that's what I'll make for an amendment.
Yeah, good, good, yeah.
But if you want to spend one hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year, to me, you're better off going to the citizens each year and saying, look, I'm asking you for one hundred and seventy. Some years they may say yes, some years they may say no. But it's up to them.
I agree.
That's why, that's why we went back and said, let's present both so we can have the discussion. I think there was a lot of merit in trying to get five years' worth of projects done in a year, because we are so far behind. We look at, look at the plan, it's ahead of us. It's twenty-five years to get all these roads addressed, and they're already back into the circle again.
That's what I'm looking at.
Right, and that's...
For the benefit of the taxpayer, I think that the bond is a better deal for the roads. I mean, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Byron, and... But I think that it may get to the point where our roads may be in such bad shape that we're going to end up spending more than that one hundred and seventy thousand a year over the seven-year period. So, I, I... Again, I understand what you're saying, but I think that the taxpayer is far better served with the bond and getting the roadwork done at a cheaper bonding cost. And actually, we'd be able to get more roadwork done upfront than we could spreading it out over the years and asking them for the one hundred and seventy thousand a year. They're going to get fatigue.
Well, and the old theory too was, is that the, the cost of doing roads is going to continue to increase.
Exactly.
The cost of the debt would probably make up the difference over five years, but... Let me just take, let me just take a straight vote then. For Article two, does the board of selectmen support Article two as it's written? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No?
No.
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 It's struck, okay.
Okay.
I think it's just, you know, simple, it's a simple up-down as far as I'm at this point.
Yeah, it's okay.
All right, so that takes care of that Article two. That means we're going to be going with Article four A, correct?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, four B doesn't make sense then, so...
I just have a question on Article three, I mean, if we're just going on the list.
Yeah, I was just going to clarify that, yeah. Article three's not actually been, it's not even constructed right yet, because we don't have the bottom line and all that stuff.
Well, you got to vote a four zero zero.
That's, he cut and pasted from last year.
Yeah, sorry, that's a failed cut and paste, so...
He just cut and pasted the wording, he's got to fill the numbers in once we vote the bottom line. So, Article three is not going to be voted on tonight. So, the next one is Article, I'm going to call it Article four now.
Yep.
Which is the, to see if the town will, will vote and raise, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the purpose of a road pavement improvement project. This sum matches the amount expected to be received by the town through the NH DOT Highway Block Grant. It is anticipated these funds will be, be used towards the cost of repairs to Cutler Road and Stark Lane. This is a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA thirty-two colon seven, section six, and will not lapse until the...
Work is complete.
Work is completed.
Improvements are completed or by December, yeah.
Same thing.
So, move, Mr. Jewett?
So, motion in a second, by second, yeah. So, motion made by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Mr. Bork. Discussion?
Yes, why are we...
Sorry.
Yeah, why are we putting down Stark Lane and Page Road? Earlier on, we received a document that basically says that the road agent wrote the, the road plan, Stark Lane and Cutler, I'm sorry, he wanted to get Mike done.
Mike's in the operating budget.
Yeah, it's Cutler and Stark that are not.
Mike's in the operating budget.
And we'll have all three in those?
So, yeah, that would be above and beyond Mike.
Right, right.
Because if we don't get any money, all we can do is Mike.
Mike is in the operating budget, this is the increments on top of this. So, Mike is in the budget, we'll do Cutler, and we'll get started on Stark. Part of the reason for carryover is that Stark takes one hundred and eighty-one thousand to do, so...
It's going to be, it's going to be a two-year project.
Right, which is, hence the non-lapsing.
What's the cost of, um...
Isn't it in the project list? The cost for Cutler? If that's what you were going to ask, sorry.
Cost of Cutler's one hundred and forty-five, and the cost of Stark?
We have is one eighty-one, one twenty.
One eighty-one, so it's, it's going to be split across two years. They're going to use the difference, what's left, to start Stark.
I got a quick question, if I may.
Yeah.
Did, did, uh, these prices for these roads, was this just one bid or several bids?
This is, these are no bids at this point, because we're not, we're not... This is straight engineer, we're not linear with, yeah. Yeah.
Stark won't be a hundred percent done, they're going to use what they have left.
So, your proposal is that we're going to have to use the funds as well to do part of this roadwork from the allocation of highway block grant monies for next year?
Yeah, the, the, the block grant money is one piece, because when we started this, we said, okay, we have one hundred and seventy, we're keeping in the, we're keeping in the budget. And what we had presented is, let's match that with another one. And so, we keep the budget, and then this is sort of the, the, do you want to get there faster question to the voters. The voters say no, we'll do Mike. And then the following year, the board will decide first, do we put Cutler in the budget and then ask for Stark separately, or how, how you work your way through the plan?
Further discussion?
Is that all of Robin from the top to the bottom?
It's not Robin, it's Mike.
I mean, oh, I thought you were just saying Robin.
No, Mike. Mike and Stark and Cutler is what we're talking about.
Right.
Mike's in the budget, Stark and Cutler are what's in the warrant.
But I thought we were talking before about Robin was really bad.
Yeah, and the, the plan that Jack has put together at three, the three forty a year, so one seventy in the budget and then this one seventy in an article, we would see Robin being possible in two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand what?
Fifteen.
We'd be asking for it on the next budget.
Well, I thought we were talking about that before.
If you, yeah, I would just suggest refer back to the plan. You'll see, you'll see the road agent's plan, which is road by date.
Yeah.
And they're based on what can fit in the budget, but also based on the current status of that road, whether it's bad or not bad, that kind of thing, so, I'd look at that.
Yeah, and then obviously, he did a little shoehorning around to make those numbers work too. You know, because looking at the, hey, if this is your budget for the year, where can you get more done? Or where do you, you know, that, build up a little bit of a balance one year so you get the whole road done the next year?
Okay, further discussion? Go ahead.
So, at the end of this, you're going to be left after completing, well, I didn't conclude, never mind, I didn't include Mike in the calculation. What's the calculated cost for Mike?
Right about, right about one seventy.
Yeah.
Is the engineer estimate we have right now. So, that would pretty much wholly consume what's in the operating budget.
Unless somehow you could pull a...
It almost, it actually exceeds what you'd have.
Yeah, we're at, we're like right at...
I calculate you about ten thousand less. I, I calculated you about ten thousand less, but... Okay.
I don't think, I mean, we're saying Stark, but it doesn't sound like we'll have enough money to start the project, but it'll lapse into next year, so...
Right.
The priorities, Cutler and Stark's the after, if we can get it done. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries, well, motion carries five zero zero. So, we'll go with, it's five zero zero. Or five zero, yeah. Article, why is the numbers changed? Where's Article five?
There is no Article five.
Yeah, fixed the number.
I knew they'd be changing anyway, so...
Okay, so, Fire Department, Air Pack Replacement. To see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-one thousand dollars towards the purchase of replacement SCBA equipment. These funds will be used either as the town's matching share of, for a regional grant application, which, if awarded, will award the town one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for the purchase of this, this equipment. Or, if the grant is not awarded, as a portion of the purchase price of the equipment, the remaining, remaining funds of which will be raised and appropriated at a town, at a future town meeting. This is a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA thirty-two colon seven, section six, and will not lapse until the equipment is purchased or by December thirty-first, two thousand six, wherever, whichever is sooner.
Move to approve?
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Jewett. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero one. Next is the police contract. Didn't we re-vote this? We got to vote the article, but we voted, okay. Semantics.
Just my notes here on the side, if you're looking in the document, we did change the appropriation numbers, because I needed to gross appropriate the dispatch four fifty-seven match, even though it, it's revenue neutral. So, you'll see those, each year has gone up by two thousand dollars. And food for thought, something we've never done before, but council mentioned, you may also want to add a separate article if you're concerned about passage. And you could add a separate article saying, shall the town, if Article seven is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article seven cost items only. So, basically saying, okay, if the contract doesn't pass, you could hold a special meeting just to deal with the contract items. You haven't done that in the past, but, um...
Well, I don't, guess what it's a do?
Well, what it would do is allow them to go back and renegotiate. And if they reached agreement again, come back to a special town meeting during that given year, rather than waiting until the next town meeting to come back.
Um, under what RSA authority is that granted?
We just did it in Northland.
Yeah, under what authority is that?
Um, I, off the top of my head, I don't know.
But authority is there, you can do that, as long as the people vote on allowing a special town meeting.
So, if, if it was, I'm trying to understand the mechanics. If it fails, the police union can go back and do negotiation, come back with an agreement, we would then request a special election.
Only if the voter's granted.
Right, yeah, right, this article would have it authorized by the voter for a special meeting just for that purpose.
Right.
How does that, how does that happen?
If they authorize it, all you'd have to do is call the special meeting.
But how does that, how's, how's the mechanics? Is it one vote for the union, is there a separate, second, separate article that says it?
Um, yeah, if, you would do this contract, then if you wanted to, you would have, you know, the next article following.
Say, if this fails?
Right, if this fails, you know, if, shall the town, if it's defeated, authorize a special meeting. Um, you know, I'm not sure that it's something you necessarily need to do. I passed it along because it was a comment from her. Like I said, you haven't done it in the past, so I'm not sure you need to pursue it, but...
All right. Well, for the article that hand anyway. Shall the town vote to approve the costs, the cost items for wage and related costs that have been included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Town of Litchfield and Council Ninety-three over the American Federate, Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, which provides, which provides for the following increases in wages and benefits. Year 2014, $44,562. And year 2015, $31,355, which is an estimated. And future to ra, and further, to raise and appropriate the sum of $44,562 for the 2014 fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributed, attributable to the increase in benefits over those appropriate at the current staffing levels. This collective bargaining agreement covers the full and part-time police officers and the full-time dispatches. This contract, this contract contains no raises for 2014 and a 2% raise in 2015.
So Chairman, I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second? I'll, I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
When did we talk about having the non-union? Remember, I said, I was very concerned that, uh, non-union members have not got raises now for two years. And I think that it's fair that they should be getting a raise also. I think that if, if one group can, I think the other group should get something. Maybe not as much or whatever, but I, I feel that. We talked that we, I thought that we were going to decide that before we voted on this.
Well, we've, we've already voted to approve, we've already voted to approve the, the contract to the union.
But we didn't say what you were going to give to your non-union members.
There are, if you recall, there are two activities that are going on. One is, we've been working on a pay plan adjustment, or pay plan, a reconstruction of the pay plan.
Right.
That's one, that's one task we're doing.
Right.
And because there are no increases in wages in 2014, we can address the, the increase in 2014.
That doesn't seem fair.
That's where it currently sits right at the moment. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm interested to see the non-union employees that are going to be getting.
Was that a, you were in favor though, right?
No.
So you voted no?
So you're voting no for the police union contract?
Right.
Okay. Abstained? Motion carries four one zero. That'll be what's on the warrant. All right, next. I just lost my place. Next one will be...
Stormwater.
Yep, Stormwater Management Trust Fund.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to board a selectman consider council's, um, suggestion for a warrant, I'll call it seven A, that would, um, authorize the board of selectmen to hold one special meeting if it were to fail.
Okay, that's a motion. I'll second it. So motions were made and seconded to basically add seven A, as we discussed. Give us an option if it does fail to go to a special meeting. Hearing none. And warrant, you can construct that warrant fairly quickly, right?
Well, Laura has it. She didn't run it anyway, the attorney.
Yeah, it was in the notes, I thought.
Yes, and if you refresh the document, you'll see it now.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero zero. And yes, it is there, so. All right, Stormwater Management Trust Fund. To see if the town will vote to establish a stormwater management expend, expendable trust fund pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon nineteen dash A. Furthermore, to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 for deposit into this fund, and to appoint the board of selectmen as agents to expend from the fund. The fund can be used for the costs associated with engineering, documenting, repair, and planning of stormwater and drainage systems, as well as compliance with EPA stormwater system permits.
Move to accept, Mr. Chair.
Motion to accept. Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bork. Discussion?
Can I suggest that you can lower that number?
Oh, yeah.
Um, we had talked about 50, so I carried the 50 across. If you look at the notes that I provided, um, I put a pretty detailed list of, uh, what we would be likely looking at, um, with the strategy I was talking about. I got a ballpark back from eng, the engineers. Um, and their, their estimate for the scope of tasks is between $33,000 and $45,000.
So which number, which number are you trying to lean towards?
Um, I'd say 40.
I'll amend my motion to 40,000, I like that.
Okay, motion's been amended, do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Bork. So everything reads the same with the new amount of $40,000, discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Amendment passes five zero zero. Back to the main motion with the new amount of $40,000. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained? Motion carries four one zero. Next up is the repainting of Old Town Hall. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 for repairing the Old Town Hall, and to fund the, and to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of the amount from the unexpendited fund balance as of December thirteenth, 2013. This price includes legally required abatement of lead paint. This would, uh, this would have a net cost to the 2014 general, general, general taxation of $0.
Did we vote this, or is this just a type?
I think we actually voted this.
No, 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 sorry, that's a failed. You haven't voted any of this.
No, this was last year's count, right, because this is the same article.
Yeah, yeah, I copied, yeah.
Yeah, stop doing that.
Sorry.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, motion to approve, do I have a second? I'll second. Discussion?
I thought that the Historical Society said they had $3,000 that they will be willing to put into it. So where is the $20,000 coming from?
The 20 we have is coming from fund balance, so we would look to their money and then ours as needed on top of it. The advantage of it coming from fund balance is when it's not spent, it goes back to fund balance.
Why don't we do it the opposite way?
Because what hap-
We'll give $17,000 and they'll give it.
What happens if the Historical Society can't give us the $3,000? They said they probably could last year. We need, we need, the building needs to get repaired, our estimate is $20,000, so we need to appropriate $20,000. If they come up with the $3,000, then we're only paying 17 and it doesn't...
They said they would.
What they said and what they're going to do are true, you know, until they actually do it.
I think that we should try to hold them to it.
Well, we should hold them to it, but we, we also know the building needs to be taken care of.
The building's more important, the building needs, it's a treasure, and it needs to be taken care of. And I, if they come up with their money, it will reduce our costs anyway.
Right.
So I think that we should go exactly what Mr. Brunel said. It, it's costing us, um, there's no impact on 2014 tax rate because it's coming from fund balance, so I think it's, we need to proceed with it.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained?
I think that they should pay it, they said they should.
Motion carries four one zero. All right, Town Hall Roof. To see if, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $43,120 for the replacement of the, of the roof on Town Hall, on Town Hall.
Town, yeah.
You got Town Hall, roof, 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 roof.
Roof, roof, oh, sorry, now, yeah, that was, that was a reword. There we go.
And, uh, and to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of the amount from the unexpected fund balance as of December 31st, 2013.
Thirteen.
Be a long time away.
I'm paying it forward a lot there, okay, yep.
It's actually 2103.
Yeah, I, I'm reading it the right way, he's fixing it.
Yeah, I'm committing the taxpayers.
This would, this would have a net, this would have a net cost to the 2014 general taxation of $0.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Can you explain exactly why we need to replace the roof?
We had a long discussion about that.
Long, oh, yeah.
The roof is well beyond its life expectancy and needs to be replaced.
Is it leaking?
Not yet.
Yeah, I don't think that's the issue. It's not leaking yet, but it's showing a lot of wear. What was the...
When was that done?
We were trying to place, um...
I'm thinking after the last fire, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was...
You weren't here.
Oh, God, no. No, no, and I'm trying to remember, we talked about this months and months ago now, and it was upwards of...
There was one fire in 1981.
Yeah, I think we figured it was 20...
No, sorry, it was 84.
Yeah, and I think we figured it's, it's at least 20, 25 years old.
And that took the roof off then, so I'm thinking the roof is 1985, 84.
We did patching, I know, but I don't think we've done it. The whole roof.
No, that's what I was...
And that's what, that's what this project's going to do, is replace the whole roof. Okay, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero zero. Human Services Agencies. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,952 to support the request of human services agencies, including Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Home Health and Hospice, St. Joseph's Community Services, Bridges and Community Council of Nashua.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
I would like to see this changed, if we can do this, the article, so that we can show, almost as a line item, almost as a spreadsheet, what these agencies had asked for versus what we're giving them. Okay? Because this looks like we're going to take the 4952 and spread it out all, all of those agencies, which is fine, but there are other agencies that had also requested monies, which we have not... See, I, I think what the intention is, is to give the citizens of Litchfield an opportunity to look at this and say whether they want to change any of these during the deliberative session. And, and I'm trying to figure out a way to do that, so that you can exactly see what it is that we intend to provide.
What did we do last year? This is exactly what it did, right?
We used, we used this article last year and applied the previous amounts. Now, I, what...
You understand what I'm saying?
I, I know what you're saying, and I think when, when I wrote, you know, when we had earlier discussions on this, I had kind of the chart that showed the agencies, what we gave and what they asked for.
Right.
It, it would be my intention that that is a very clear slide at the deliberative session. And, you know, we lead off saying, the agencies have asked us for, call it whatever it is, $20,000.
As long as we can get that information in front of the people.
Yeah.
Then I'm fine with it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Because that's all I'm looking to do, is let the citizens have a chance to say, yeah, that's the right amount, no, that's too much, no, that's too little, whatever they want.
And we can do that, we can actually highlight that, like you said, during deliberative.
Right, but I think the place we have to do that's the deliberative. I can't really, by the time it gets to the warrant at the ballot, it's too late to weave all of that information in.
We do 29,000.
No, but all I'm saying is that if you construct a warrant to read that way, you can present that same information at the, at the deliberative. And I understand that you can't go into the ballot booth and cross out.
Right, right.
I was just telling, look, can I shake my head? I know of a town that's half the size of this, does $29,000 worth of contributions.
Does that include welfare?
And we're doing 4,900, it's just...
Does that include welfare, though?
No. Welfare is a separate, separate thing. $4,900, we ought to be ashamed of ourselves. Oh, well.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero zero. Extended liquor sales. To see if the town will vote to allow on-premise licensees for liquor... Man, that's weird, this reads weird. To see if the town will vote to allow on-premise licensees for liquor sales to sell until 2:00 AM as authorized by RSA 179 colon 17, Roman numeral two, section B.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Mr. Bork. Discussion?
I think it's a shame, we're going to add on more time, we're going to have more drunks on the road.
Well, we checked with the police chief, and the chief...
Excuse me?
We checked with the chief of police, and the chief does not feel that there'd be any issue with it.
There's only, there's only a few establishments to do it.
The town had an opportunity to choose.
Right, and that's what we're giving them by sending it to them.
What Mr. Byron is saying is, the police chief was conferred with, he thought there would be no issue with increasing the time from 1:00 to 2:00, that it felt like there was no, no, there would be no impact.
Don't they have enough drunks on the road?
That's their job to get them off the road. And if they're not concerned with it, then I think we ought to offer the opportunity. We are enabled by the state to do that, and I think that we need to assist our businesses. If they're interested in doing that, we need to allow them to do that.
By 2:00, they don't even know what day it is.
What the police department pointed out is, if they're drunk at 10:00, 11:00, 12:00, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00, they'll be drunk at any of those times, and we will get them whatever hour it is, so.
Oh, really?
I would just like to not talk about that we have a alcohol problem in towns we don't.
I just think it's a crime, they're encouraging it.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained? Motion carries four one zero. Conservation cap, no, Conservation Fund Cap. To see if the town will vote to amend the 2011 vote regarding the positive land use change tax funds into the Conservation Fund to authorize 80% of the land use tax, the land use change tax collected pursuant to RSA 71 dash A colon 25 to be deposited into Conservation Fund in accordance with RSA 36 dash A colon 5, Roman numeral three, as authorized by, oh my God, as authorized by RSA 79 dash A colon 25, Roman numeral two. However, in no event shall the balance in the Conservation Fund be permitted to exceed $1 million. Now, Jason, you're giving us two options here.
No, no, I'm giving you, you, two articles.
I see what you're saying.
Because I had to, I was trying to marry two concepts together of, let's do the cap, but then also set up the separate land use change tax fund, so in any given year, it at least sits there for you.
I recall now, I apologize.
Yeah. Uh, council said, I see what you're trying to do, but I can't see that you can put them together.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Um, I have a question, but it relates to 14B.
Cool, can we...
If you want to call it that.
Can we talk, can we make a motion on the first one first?
You can, but you may have to go back and change it, depending upon the answer to the question, but let's go for it.
Okay. I'm trying to drive the meeting, sorry.
I don't have a problem.
All right, you have a question around fourteen, I, it's not what we discussed this already, that's why I was curious. Okay, what's your question, Mr. Byron?
Um, fourteen B. Should it be contingent upon passage of fourteen A?
So should it say that?
Yeah, yeah, because I think we don't want to do it, or, the whole intent of fourteen B is kind of a safety check on if fourteen A passes.
It's a good question.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll move both articles, Mr. Chief.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the two articles?
As long as, excuse me, as long as it's worded, you are changing the wording.
He's gonna change the article numbers, too, because the number's gonna change also, but yeah. Discussion?
So, just to be clear, that after the million dollar ceiling is hit, it will roll over into the separate fund, and therefore only be accessible in the second fund should the legislative body vote affirmatively to provide that money?
Yeah, it, wherever it goes, the legislative body has to decide the following year, and if it, they decide, and if no action is taken, then it goes back, it immediately goes out of that fund and back to the town's fund balance. It, it can accrue from year to year.
Okay, because the original intention, when you and I talked about this, was to create a ceiling of one million dollars in the conservation purchase fund, with the intent that it would roll into a separate fund, be held in that separate fund, but not be put into the general fund, so that should the conservation commission wish to purchase a piece of property that's, say, four million dollars, they would therefore have to go to the legislative body, request the additional funds to make up the four million, come out and then be put in.
Mm-hmm. Which you can do, how, the only difference from, I think, when we talked about it, and then kind of digging into the, the rest of the twists of the law, is that it does have that one-year expiration. It, if you get the extra money, it forces the question at the next town meeting for the disposition of that money. You can't build kind of a second, parallel fund. So if money is spent...
Why can't we?
Um, you can't, well, okay, with this mechanism, you can't do it. Nothing would stop you from setting up a separate trust fund, perhaps with a different purpose or something else, where you could vote, if you happened to get this land use change tax money in one year, you could dump, dump it into a new trust fund. Although, why you put it in the new trust fund and not put it back in the other trust fund, I don't know.
See, what I'm concerned about is, this now becomes a situation where you're basically, the citizens have voted in the past that they wanted to provide the conservation commission with the opportunity to purchase land. I don't have a problem with that, that's the citizens' right, of course, to do. What I wanna do is make sure that that decision made by the citizens through vote continues on, and the only way I can see of doing that would be to construct a separate fund, which would hold that one million dollar plus excess revenue from land use change tax to be held pending the vote of the citizens to move it in. The way this is constructed, is what my concern is, is that we're doing it, we're not creating that, we're doing away with it. And it's gonna drop into the general fund.
Um, no, because unfortunately, what we were looking for was a two-part solution, and unfortunately, the way it's constructed, it looks like we need a three-part solution. You cap it at a million, and the current year, the money that comes in over the million, goes and sits in a separate fund for a year, and then we have to consciously move it out of that fund into another fund, or it drops to the general fund. So, in, in, to fully sort of flesh this out, you'd create, you'd create a third, you know, there'd be a third part, which I would suggest you probably don't do this year, but you would create a third fund, and then move each year the balance of this to that. I don't think I can move it automatically.
But the, but the problem you got into was an issue of revenues, and the impact that's gonna have on the tax base.
If you don't move it, you, right.
No, if you leave it in a separate fund, it's not claimed as, it's, it's not necessarily claimed against the town's revenue stream, right?
Right, right, because the, the concern, the reason for suggesting this kind of circuit-breaker fund is, let's say you have a huge chunk of land come out of land, of current use, you get a big land use change tax in one year, and you have this million dollar cap. Well, if you only have that, all of that revenue goes and immediately comes to the town to the general fund.
Right, but you just get the same effect, once you take it out of that fund and move it into the general rev, general, don't you at that point have to declare it as revenue?
Uh, no, not if, if, if this, this fourteen B puts it in kind of a holding cell for a year, and then you consciously decide, put it someplace else, uh, put part of it someplace else, and if you, but if you choose not to act, or whatever action you take to town meeting fails, then it falls to the general fund, it becomes a revenue the following year.
Right, but that's my point.
Yeah.
You're, you're just delaying the impact of these monies by a year, if it falls into the general fund, and that's my concern, because it's gonna drive our tax rate goo goo.
Mm-hmm.
Or goo Google, that's whatever you wanna think.
Which is the concern, right, I mean, this buys...
So, I'm thinking that you keep it in that fund, leave it in that fund, and then let the citizens move it out for the purchase of properties, if that's what they so desire, or they can do it some other point in the future, where they could cap that fund in general, and then just say everything goes into the revenue stream. But what I'm concerned about is, by default, we could get into a situation where that money rolling over that second cup into the general fund creates a situation where a tax budget goes nuts, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Mm-hmm, okay, all right, so then, this, this tool may not be the tool that you're looking for, um, and really, what, what we need to go back to is something that...
I mean, maybe the board's in agreement doing it this way, I don't know, the, the board says so, but I just wanna, I just wanna point out to the board that the issue is here.
Yeah, I mean, is there a way to reconstruct fourteen B to, to address, basically, it goes into the fund and holds it there, and it's it, and we don't, it's not part of the, the conservation's access unless the...
Yeah, yeah, I, let me see, I know exact, I, I know what you're talking about, um, and...
Because we hashed this out, and, and, and originally, I had said we can't do, and then you raised the issue...
Yeah.
Which would, which started me thinking on this whole thing. And my concern was simply a matter of, okay, if we construct that holding fund, then I can buy that, and then the voters have to take it out of there and give it to the conservation commission to do their thing with. That's fine, that keeps the conservation commission whole, which is the will of the voters, it doesn't affect our tax rate, which is what the citizens also had voted on, but the concern I have now is that when that bucket hits a two-year clock...
Yeah.
It goes over the side, and then that hits our bottom line for revenue.
I'm confused in the mechanics, the way it works now. Today, it can exceed a level of a million dollars, the conservation commission wants to buy a piece of property that's a million plus, whatever. They hold the public hearing, they get our approval, they go, they go buy it.
Well, there's another article that's coming up, which would basically change all that, but that's another issue.
But...
The, the, the way it is now, yes, but that fund can allow, can be allowed to grow to any number under the sun.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess, the point is, when you get over a million dollars, you're talking real money.
Yeah.
And I think that the citizens should have a say in purchases when they get beyond a certain point, and that's the whole purpose of this, let the citizens have a say.
So, any money that's held in this other fund, where it's over the million dollar mark, it would require the vote of the citizens, a special meeting to do it, or a public meeting?
They would have to go with a warrant, follow it.
A warrant, a year later.
Yeah, whatever the next March meeting would be, or whatever. That's the way at least I envision it working.
Yeah, I think that's our...
All right, let, let me, let me figure out the right tool, because I know what you're looking for now, so let...
So, can I ask of the second motion maker to withdraw, and we'll table that till the next meeting? Is that one more?
Sure, yep, no problem.
Let go of second, so, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so we're gonna, we'll, we'll withdraw the motion, and then we'll, re-adopt fourteen B to be more in line with what the original intent was.
Well, did we drop fourteen A, or did, was that combined?
That, that was combined.
It was a combined motion, so if we, if we wanna approve fourteen A, I'll take a motion, but...
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so on fourteen A only, which is puts the cap into not exceed a million dollars. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero zero. So fourteen A's all set, Jason? So you can mark that as...
Yep, like I'll...
And will we work fourteen B, and if it means it's another one, let me know.
Yeah.
Okay, article, well, uh, next article is expand the conservation fund uses, to see if the town will vote to rename the fund, which has in the past been referred to as interchangeably as the town conservation fund, the con, the conservation land acquisition fund, and the conservation and land acquisition fund, to the conservation fund, and to confirm that this fund may be used for all purposes authorized for conservation funds under RSA thirty-six dash A. Now, do I have a...
Yep, I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
We had this discussion before.
We did. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Stewart. So my understanding, the intent is, we can use this to take care of some of the conservation lands, like the, the, the pond and stuff like that.
Well, furthermore, I think the intent going forward would be that we would zero out the conservation commission budget, and they would run off of their, their budget off of this fund.
Okay.
Not that doesn't, that doesn't mean...
Well, everything that's, everything that falls on RSA thirty-six A, we can fly there and be done with it.
Pretty much everything in the budget.
It is everything, okay. Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero zero. Article sixteen, Route one oh two, signalized intersection. To see if the town will direct the board of selectmen to bring to the two thousand and fifteen annual meeting an article to study the alternatives and potential cost to, cost for a stoplight controlled intersection allowing access to Route one oh two. I, I thought we threw this away, it's not our way, it's not even in our town.
Well, at least one location, but there may be a location that's in town.
Oh, I know, down the, okay.
Cutler Road, Cutler Road.
Cutler Road, I know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be okay with Cutler Road, but I know that Pedro's not in our town, and that's a state road anyway.
I don't think it's an issue getting out of Cutler Road personally.
That's the easy way to get out, yeah.
It's a state road, why would we pay for a signal on a state road?
Because the state won't do it.
Well, so we gonna start paying for everything the state doesn't do?
We, we stripe this road, it's gonna, it'll do it.
Yeah, I know, and that's the trouble, are we gonna end up having to, the more they downshift, the more we pick up.
And rightfully so.
Oh, yeah, listen...
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, I, I think, at the end of the day, our, our, the safety of our citizens are important, so, all this is asking if the voters want us to go look at it, so I don't see any, there's no hard issue.
This, this just refers us to go, come up with something, and it also tells us, do we have citizens' concern about getting onto one oh two, out of Litchfield?
But should we also, should we, in this warrant, should we name the intersection?
No.
I don't think I know.
No, I, I don't wanna name, that's the whole point of this, is, we got into this because we said, we started with Page, and then everybody kinda threw the wall up, oh, that's not even in our town, let's not talk about it, then we kinda moved to Cutler, then we said, well, maybe there's a third option out there, so...
We did, right.
You know, so let's not presuppose the answer.
Okay.
Um, you know, I, I, just as a little bit of context, too, I've talked with a transportation planner at NRPC about what services they may be able to offer, they have some new traffic and intersection modeling software that they're looking to do a few demonstration projects and tests with, and I said, hey, if I got a deal for you, you even have some road, you, you have some, some traffic data that you've pulled already on that card or twice, so, we may be able to get some free input as well to help frame this conversation.
Okay.
So what are they gonna say, nothing? We're just dragging our feet, we're gonna wait till someone else gets killed?
Well, I mean, we, we're, we're between a rock and a hard place, because I can't, I don't have a plan, um, we know, we, we, you know, we've said tonight, why are we paying for something that's a state road, or moreover, not in our town, so we gotta come up with something that has the chance to succeed.
And what if the state refuses to do it? We, I don't believe we can mandate that it go up there, if the state refuses, we cannot do it.
We should get our state reps to help this.
I can't understand how they can refuse, when you're...
Because it's their road.
Well, actually, let me, let me stop the conversation.
Terrible.
There is no motion on the table, so that's my fault for allowing the conversation to continue, so, for us, is there, is there a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept the article as stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Byron, seconded by Mrs. Stewart. Further discussion? My only point, I, my only comment would be, is I don't see it hurts when we, if voters say they'll do it, and we can, you know, we can bring forward what our plan would be, and what we'll take to get it done, require state approval, that's, that's gonna be the hinge, we'll make sure people understand that, then the residents can solicit the state to help.
I think it also gives you a feeling, if there is sufficient concern in town of Litchfield. If there's not concern, and people vote it down, tell me it, you got your answer.
Yep. Okay, further discussion?
I just think we should go down and, and talk to Hudson, so, I think just letting it go, that's a cop-out, I really think that we're doing justice to our people. It doesn't cost anything to cop, to talk to him, and just say, "Don't you feel obligated?" I feel obligated for people coming out of Litchfield and taking a chance on their life, boy. Every time I go that way, I think of people, how can they dare go that way? I would go down Cutler Road anyway.
You can go down three A and get out without any problems, too, and bypass, and bypass all the, all the Alveron traffic.
Do you know how much further that is, if you're in a hurry to get to work, or whatever?
It's faster usually, because Alveron backs up, but, further discussion? Mr. Byron, give it to me.
Yeah, I had a, just, and it's a general comment on the title, I, I think putting signalized intersection doesn't necessarily mean that's, I, I just said one oh two intersection, and, and just leave it at that, simply because you could decide that signalized intersection is not what you wanna do, and it's something different, so I think using the term signalized just...
Or intersection study?
Yeah.
How about intersection study?
It's, it's not relevant to the warrant article, but I think it's just...
Well, if you look in, in the warrant itself, it does say for a stoplight controlled intersection, so maybe it is...
Yeah, well, that...
Well, then that may be something we wanna, to do there, and, and change the wording on that, because I don't necessarily feel that we should obligate ourselves to a stoplight control, I think we, whatever the best alternative is, I think is the point.
I think we should study it, and then, see, or...
Just a controlled, a controlled intersection?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or intersection study, and you don't bind yourself in anything.
Either way, whatever works.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero zero.
And I think to answer Pat's point, is, if this passes, then we go down and talk to Hudson, if that's what makes sense.
Yep. Okay, next article, appoint capital improvement program committee, to see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to appoint a capital improvement program committee, which will, which shall include at least one member of the planning board, and may include but not be limited to other members of the planning board, the budget committee, or the board of selectmen to prepare and amend a recommended program for municipal capital improvement projects projected over a period of at least six years.
Um...
Do I have a motion?
I'll move to...
Second.
Accept, as written.
Motion made and, and seconded, discussion?
The, this is from an RSA, and I'm wondering if you should reference the RSA in there.
We could.
I don't know what the RSA number is, but...
Yep.
In my ramblings through our state laws, it was one that came up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll drop that in.
Because we're doing this basically under authority of the state, the state statute, and, um, this would therefore replace the planning board as the, with the capital improvement program committee in its place for determining the, um, capital improvement, uh, needed for the town.
Do we wanna defer voting until we rewrite, rewrite it for the RSA, or we're okay with just putting the RSA in it and be done?
Well, I'm assuming that you can just drop that.
Like, I, yeah, I just, I'll put the placeholder in and see, um...
Whatever the RSA number is, I don't know.
Pursuant to RSA, blah blah, let's see if...
How about pursuant to RSA 674:5?
Okay.
5A, 5B, C?
Hold on a second.
Or Z?
It all depends on whoever gave me this original recommendation, what guidance I was given. No, it's just straight 674:5.
I can't help you if Mr. Lemire gave you a wrong reference.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Let's see, it's in there now, at least some reference in the RSA's in there. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries 5-0-0. It's another long one. Article 18, elderly exemptions. Shall we modify the elderly exemption from property tax... from property tax in town of Litchfield based on the assessed value for qualified taxpayers for the person 65 years of age up to 75 years, $50,000... oh, okay, up to 75 years, $50,000; for persons 76 years and up to 80 years, $80,000; and for persons 81 of years of age or older, $125,000. To qualify, the person must be... must... the person must have been a New Hampshire resident for at least three consecutive years, own the real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned by such person's spouse, they must have been married to each other for at least five consecutive years. How else can you be married? In addition, the taxpayer must...
You would be common law.
In addition, the taxpayer must have net income in each applicable age group of not more than a dollar amount determined by the town or city of not more than $30,000 if married, a combined net income of not more than a dollar amount determined by the town... next page, or a city not more than $45,000, and own net assets not in excess of $150,000 excluding the value of the person's residence and one automobile, the automobile of greatest value if more than one is owned. This article brings the eligibility requirement into conformance with state law and reduces the asset limit from $300,000 to $150,000. This motion will take effect April 1, 2014.
It's a move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Byron?
Buckaroo bonsai. You wrote in here that it brings it into conformance with state statute, but I believe we were already in conformance with state statute.
You were not in conformance with state statute.
Because we changed that based upon the review of DRA.
Well, DRA missed a few things.
Okay.
The comments that I got back, you know, I put them over here on the side from counsel. There are conditions on the elderly exemption listed here, this was the previous language, which are not found in statute and which we do not believe can be placed on such an exemption. No one under 60 living in the home having to have lived in New Hampshire for five years and had to have lived in Litchfield for one year. So, and the comment was, I understand this was originally adopted by petition. Since we are changing the asset limit, I recommend correcting these errors as well. So, those are... those are the other corrections that are coming in.
Okay.
So... I think your original DRA-related correction was probably related to the age bands.
The age brackets were incorrect on the petition article, and we had to fix that.
Yeah, and so I think they corrected that, and then they... the rest of it just is seen kind of as the standard boilerplate, except it was the wrong standard boiler... it was too much boilerplate, so...
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries 5-0-0. Next, appointed road agent. To see if the town will vote to discontinue the elected office of highway agent and to authorize the selectmen to appoint the highway agent, the current highway agent shall continue to hold the office until 2015 annual town meeting election, at which time the elected office shall terminate. If adopted, the authority of the selectmen to appoint the highway agent shall continue in effect until changed by a majority vote of the annual... of an annual or special town meeting. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Every year, we go through the same thing, and every year, we vote to do this, and then we get feedback that there's concerns about it. And it keeps popping up and calming down, and I hear feedback that says, yeah, it's all the... it's the way to go and everything else from the individuals involved. And then it's like, well, now I've changed. And I guess I'm voting against it until such time as we have a new road agent. And I'm not unhappy with the road agent we have. That's not the issue. It's just that I don't get a good read on what his thinking is on this. That's all.
I think in the past... so, if I recall, the past times we brought this up, it's always been during the road agent's election time, and that has a negative impact that we're coming forward with the warrant to appoint versus leveraging the elected. And so, it just sends the wrong message, and I think that's been the feedback. The intent has always been that if we do this, it's because we want to make sure that we always have someone that's qualified in that position, to ensure that somebody is, you know, to ensure we have somebody that's capable of doing the job. And as you said, there is not one ounce of concern with our current road agent continuing in that role even beyond this period of time. I know I can't make that statement for the board, but my intention would be to continue leaving the existing road agent there until he so desires to retire. Knowing him, that ain't happening anytime soon. The road agent we have now has gotten done a lot of work that has not been done in this town in the years, and so, this is not a message saying that our road agent's doing a bad job. This is a message saying that Board of Selectmen wants to make sure that we have qualified people in the jobs in those positions, because we've seen what's happened in the past. I'll state it again, the current road agent, if it was my... if it was my authority to do it, would be in this position, and that would be something we'd do if this is successfully churned. He's done a great job. He's turned that department around. He continues to do an awesome job. So, I don't think this is anything against the current road agent at all. This is trying to make sure that we can keep that road agent in the job.
I guess I just made a point. I mean, the, you know, the concern sort of, the change... I mean, we have a great working relationship now, you know, and Jack is part of the regular department head team. We work really closely together, bounce things back and forth, you know. I think collectively, we each kind of make better decisions from that. The concern ultimately would be when you don't have that kind of working relationship and somebody else comes in, the kind of collaborative planning and working together that you have to go away. And that's sort of the risk and exposure. We talked earlier about needing hundreds of thousands of dollars for roadwork. And that's because we're on the same page. And this helps, hopefully, you to continue to stay on that page and the selectmen to be engaged in that regularly.
Just to make a point to Mr. Hoag's comment, and that is about some potential future issue with the road agent. And I just want to state again that it's... I absolutely agree with the comments the chair made concerning the issue of... or the performance of the current road agent. But I do want to say that the road agent's duties are spelled out in state law, and they're not within the purview of the Board of Selectmen, a monkey with, even if the person's appointed.
I didn't know that.
They are generally stated as such. You can meet those standards minimally, or you can meet them collaboratively, working with the rest of the... rest of the town.
Right. Well, my point is that by doing this, that doesn't necessarily mean that the board is now in a supervisory position over the road agent. What it means is that the board appoints the road agent, and that's as far as it goes.
Right.
Nothing changes.
Right. It allows...
So, it doesn't... it doesn't negate the issue of a future problem with a road agent who doesn't want to cooperate or work with the board or the town administration.
But it... I'm wrong. If in the future, we appoint a road agent that doesn't live up to the job or doesn't do the job appropriately, this board can remove that person?
I don't know. I mean, I'd say...
You have... you have a little bit more leverage. I mean, technically, you can do it now, but I mean, you... you know, when you appoint the road agent, you make your own bed. When you open it up, you could very well end up with somebody, you know, only one person runs, stranger things have happened, you know. You... the same logic you applied to, in some ways, why it was important to appoint a treasurer rather than elect a treasurer. You don't... the treasurer, too, has very specific duties that are set up, and you... the treasurer doesn't really work under your supervision. Same logic.
So, I agree with you 100%. And I originally stated that my opposition to this warrant article was because of the changing position of the existing road agent and his agreeability to this. Nothing to do whether we can remove them or not, but I would be willing to bet that you couldn't remove a road agent similarly to the way you can't remove a treasurer unless you go to Superior Court.
When they're elected.
Even when they're appointed. We appoint the treasurer. I'll make you a bet if we went and all of a sudden said, the treasurer, you're out of here. Are you gonna fly?
It depends. When you appoint them, it depends on the contract you will permit you have with them.
No. Contracts... there's no contract issue.
It's a lot different... when you appoint someone, Frank, you don't have to go to Superior Court to get rid of them.
Just... I'll put... I'll bet on it.
Where does it say that from?
I'm not sure what the RSA...
When they're elected, you have to go to Superior Court, not when they're appointed. That was the whole reason for switching the appointment. That and to make sure that there are qualified candidates as we move forward. When they're elected, you cannot make... you cannot put qualifications in.
You know, when this whole... when this article came up the last couple of times we tried to do this, you know, my vision was, the road agent of the past, we've... I've sat in this meeting, watched things not get done. I watched roads fall apart. I watched money sit in the bucket, not being utilized, and projects not getting completed. We have a road agent that has been hugely successful, and I want... personally, I'd like to see that road agent continuing in that role until he's ready to retire. And I think he has turned that department around. And I think one way to ensure that he hap... that that happens is that we change this so that we can select the right candidate. There's a chance, you know, he come up for election next... not next year, but the year after, and he's running against somebody, and he's not able to secure the position.
Right. And then, and then we...
I don't disagree with you. It was the same issue with the fire chief, you know. You know, when you're in a town where I could get elected as fire chief, there's a problem.
Well, exactly. I mean, the thing is, is that...
Yeah.
You... when you elect somebody, you get the goods and the bad, right? You get good people who are doing the job and no people who don't do the job. You know, we've had a history where the roads weren't getting done correctly, and we had overruns and high costs. This road agent has literally dropped the operating budget down. It's got things in control, got projects done. We have...
But what's this have to do with the warrant article?
The warrant article is just... understand why we want to make sure we can do it going forward, right? Make sure we have the right person.
And I agree with you. I have no problem with that.
So, then why would you not be in support of it? Because the existing road agent is... has indicated he's not in support of doing it?
I haven't talked to the existing road agent in probably a couple of months. I don't know. I have no idea whether he's in favor of it or not, whether he's the one who asked that we put this on the agenda or not. I don't know. All I'm saying...
When we last talked about it, yes.
So...
All I'm saying is...
We'll see who?
Yeah, I mean, I've talked to Jack about it, too, and, you know, I think Jack's concern would be, would he be the one appointed?
He has a problem with that now.
I've gone into the same exact thing and voted in favor of this exact same warrant article. And, you know, a month later, I'm hearing concerns.
When this would go into effect... yeah, when this goes into effect, this is when his term is up. That's why it's...
Yeah.
We can't do this any election year for him. It's just not... sends the wrong message. And that's what he was always against in the past. He may still feel concerned about it, but I think it's him. I truly believe he believes... he understands why we want to do it. So... all right, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstained? Motion carries 4-1-0. Okay. All right, tax cap. Shall we appoint the provision in positions of RSA 32:5-B and implement a tax cap whereby the governing body or budget committee shall not submit a recommended budget that increases the amount to be raised by local taxes based on the prior fiscal year actual amount of local taxes raised by more than 3%? This will require ... requires a three-fifths vote. So, do I have a...
Make a motion that we adopt the warrant article as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Byron, seconded by Mrs. Jewitt. So, I remember we talked about this a lot last... last year. How do... how do we deal with... well...
There's no safety net here. There... like I said before, I'm absolutely against this. Number one, they elect a budget committee, they elect a Board of Selectmen to manage the fiduciary aspects of the town. For years since the town was formed, they've been electing people and trusting them to do this without putting restraints on them. Now, in other words, somebody doesn't trust us to present to the taxpayers a budget that's over 3%. What happens when there's an emergency and we have to override it? There's no provision for override. What happens in an emergency? We have a disaster, and we have to expend the money. We can't. What happens if inflation, five years down the road, goes to 17%? There's no provision here. Okay, what this article does is constrain the elected bodies of town that are responsible for presenting an adequate and responsible budget to the voters. And I'm absolutely against this.
Everything that's stated by Mr. Lemire is wrong. First off, this does not void out the ability of the town to take an action similar to the way we took when we had the bridge washed out on Brickyard, where we took... went to the budget committee and then went to the DRA and got the money approved to do the emergency work on the bridge. That is still part of state law and still agree... and still available to future Boards of Selectmen if this were to happen. Secondarily, this can be overridden by the voters who attend deliberative session if they so desire to increase it beyond the 3%.
Where does it say that?
It's... it's... all it says here is that the governing body or budget committee shall not submit a recommended increase. It allows you to go into the deliberative session saying, here's the 3% increase, but we recommend that you had... you put and provide additional spending.
So, what happens?
Please let me finish, Mr. Lemire. And then, the citizens of the town who attend the deliberative session can easily increase that to whatever they feel is appropriate.
Why are you putting restraints on these boards where you have people electing these people to do the job anyway? Why are you putting added restraints on these... the governing bodies?
To try and keep the town's budget within some reasonable means.
And we haven't done that.
For the citizens of Litchfield. And on top of that, we have historically stayed within the 3% easily.
So, then why is there a need to do that?
So, then why is there a need not to do this?
Why do you have to put this? If we've been able to deliver over the past 300 years, the town has been chartered.
About 280.
Close enough. Why is there a need to put restraints on here when we've been able to do the job that we are elected to do without having a restraint? What I am deathly afraid of, because it does not say here that we can... what happens in DRA, we can... what is a 10% rule? Okay, so if you have an emergency and inflation 17%, we have an emergency and it goes over that, we're... we... this town is screwed. Because right here, you have handcuffed the elected boards that you elected to do the job. You're... now you're constraining them even more. So, what you're telling them, you don't trust them to do what they've been doing for 280 years. Don't buy it.
So, does this actually impact warrant articles, too, if this is purely the operating budget?
This is just the operating budget. That's all it is.
So, you could have... you literally could have a freestanding warrant article.
Recommended budget includes warrant articles of a town.
I guess that's my concern, because I... I mean, at first blush, the recommended budget, if it's our operating budget, you know, Mr. Byron makes a good point. We do typically stay within 3%. I get what you're saying, too.
So, then what's the need?
The need is to give the citizens of Litchfield an opportunity to feel that their budgets are being controlled and to put limits on what we as citizens want our elected officials to do. And that includes a budget committee and the Board of Selectmen. And if the citizens say, we want you to construct budgets of 3%, then so be it. That's what we are given as direction, and that's what we should do. Just because we've done it for, as you said, 280 years, and I tend to agree it's 280 years, give or take.
So, why have a budget committee?
Right. Why have a Board of Selectmen?
Because there's not the... well, I mean, to argue, I guess, to look at the other side, then what's the purpose of the budget committee?
The budget committee prepares the budget. The way this is worded is probably based upon state law, which requires you to put wording a certain way. So, that's the wording that came through state law.
Mr. Byron, the best tax cap that any municipality in this state has is at the ballot box in March. It's been like that since our democracy was formed, and I don't think that putting restraints like this on elected members of governing bodies is the proper way. What you're doing is limiting their ability to manage the prudential affairs of a town that they were elected to do.
You're enhancing it technically, because what you're doing is you're driving the Board of Selectmen, who proposes a draft budget, to the budget committee, who finalizes the budget with the guidelines that the citizens expect them to follow. If that's 3%, then it's 3%. So be it.
So, the citizens expect us to follow... when they go to the ballot box, they tell us if they like what they see or not.
But at that point...
They vote yes, or they vote no.
At that point, they don't have a choice. So, if a budget committee decides that they want to increase the budget by 17%, the citizens may not want that.
And they would give us the default.
So, they vote no.
Then we end up going into the default, which is gonna be...
Right. That's the safety net.
So, you know, there was a... in the budget meeting, there was a... there was a... So, you know, there was a, in the budget meeting, there was a, there was a comment made, or a statement made. You know, what was the point? Because the, this board presented a budget that was really close and matched up with the budget committee's recommendations and they were only able to reduce a small amount. And they felt, there was a comment made, "Why do we even bother?" It, it seems to me that the, at first, at first blush, I was like, "Well, the budget committee thinks they have to cut?" Because the idea of the two bodies is to come in, you know, our job is to come in with a, a sound fiscal plan for next year. And it should lie in fact. And so when the budget committee reviews it, you know, the town has X things it must do and those are all facts. And so, yeah, we can disagree on little doll, I mean, the disagreements were really around, you know, hundreds of dollars versus thousands and thousands of dollars. And I don't know. I'm with you on one aspect where it is ultimately the voter box has the, the ability to send that message and to deal with it. This does seem to put an unofficial restraint on the board to run the town appropriately.
And every municipality I've had dealings with has had issues with the tax cap in, in emergencies. They have had issues with it.
How, how many, how many, how many municipalities or towns around here that already implemented this tax cap?
I don't know about towns. Towns, it's not, um, cities have imposed a tax cap through their charters. Towns, this is brand new and there's not many that have imposed them.
And I know last year we discussed it. We, there were towns that were already struggling with that.
Because for that, for the reason I said, they, we're direct democracy. People go to town meeting and they vote the budgets. Uh, they vote yes or no. They don't need another layer.
The reason was very long. There was one school district last year that we were talking about and that, that there was a pro, there was a technical problem with carrying over revenues from one year to the next. That part was corrected.
There was a technical problem with the state law. And I proposed this last year and I suggested to the board whether we not implement it last year because of the technical problem with the state law. That has been corrected at the legislature and it's now no longer existing as an issue.
What happens if the legislature changes the law again? I mean, do we have an option to get out? I mean, that, my concern is, is that the RSA reads one way today and then, what does it read tomorrow? And is that handholding this again?
Yeah, I mean, the, the same-
I'm looking for the, what's the escape clause, right?
The escape clause is, the, the escape clause is ultimately, you ha, you have to vote it in by a three-fifths majority and there is rescinding language to vote it out by a three-fifths. Just like, just like SB two, you can do the same thing.
I just, I'm, I, I'm concerned about, you know, we have this huge penny check increase coming up next year. You know, that's, that's, that's running dollars. That cuts into that, sort of that cap at this point. I mean, we're gonna, we always do a good job at taking our bottom line, what we need, what we know our expect, what, what our needs are with regards to our, you know, required stuff. I just, I guess I'm concerned is-
I don't think this is needed. I just don't think it's needed and I think it's unwise to bind future boards with a tax cap in the town with direct democracy as we have it.
Okay, further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. Abstained, motion fails, two, three, zero. I, I think the, the message here is that as a governing body, we are the fiscal consultant, right? And the voters ultimately have the, have the say at the voter box. Okay. Article twenty, or as it is article twenty today, reduction in services. "To see if the town will direct the board of selectmen to develop a plan to reduce the town's services including reduction of hours of services, hours of service across all departments of the town."
Where did this come from?
This was, uh, presented by Mr. Byron.
Not this wording, no.
No, not the wording. The wording's gone through a bunch of re-edits, but again-
Has there been any mass petition to have us reduce services in town?
I think this is devil, devil's advocate side. Ask them the people, we'll answer the question once and for all. Um, I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm-
Yeah, but this is so vague.
It is vague and I'm, it's not, it's non-binding, right? As I recall?
Right, we, we started from a non-binding perspective.
Shouldn't it say non-binding though?
Yeah, but the thing is, you know-
Well, th- this is directing you to develop a plan. It's not, it's not, it's not directing you to adopt the plan.
And ultimately, the people can vote the plan up or down. Cause that would go, we would bring the plan forward.
Right, any decision you make will have to go forward.
The problem is, there's nothing here that's specific. They may not want the town clerk to reduce their hours. They may not, but they may be okay with something else. They may not want the fire department to reduce it, or the police, or whatever.
Well, I, I don't think that you could just, you know, you can't, as far as fire department and police department, it's really, I don't see how you could reduce those.
Well, even the highway department. I mean, if you look, if you look at the knobs that we have, there are far and few.
Well, when I originally proposed this, it wasn't the fire and police. In fact, I tried to accept that.
Yeah, we, no, I think you had police and I, I think we added, I think I suggested adding highway and fire, but yeah, I do recall.
And that got added in because people said, "If we're gonna do this, let's make it really hurt," or something along that line. So, that's fine. We're gonna do what we want. But all I'm suggesting is that we ought to take a look at, do we need the services, or the level of services that currently exist in town? Or should we consider and see if there's a plan that we can do to try and save the citizens some money?
I would like to see us undertake a, a survey of services, not, how about just an assessment of services within our body, without, within our, um, board, along with the town administrator, rather than going to a warrant. Because you're putting reduce, you're assuming that we're going to reduce services. After a survey or an assessment, we may find that we don't necessarily want to reduce services because we're not providing enough as it is.
Well, I think, you know, the, the surveys that we've done in the past, which have been focused on very specific things, are always seen the lightest increase. They want more, but it's really tough for us to do anything more than we're doing today in the envelope of funding we have today.
I wouldn't mind if it says to assess the town services that are provided to the taxpayers. Assess the level, not to reduce. Other than that, I would vote not recommend to.
Yeah, the other side of it is too, is we do have a contract in the, in the warrant. Would that be a message there too? Meaning, if, if voters vote down the contract, which, you know, that would send a message also.
It's not necessarily reduction of service though.
No, it would, no, well, no, it would not be by-
You know, because basically in the contract is, is mainly benefits. It's not so much service. So I, I don't think we can equate that, Mr. Chair.
Well, people have equated that, that by, by, by the fact of getting to default, people are demanding a reduction in services.
I, I don't, I, I think they just don't want to see an increase in their taxes and I can see that.
I think that by voting default, they're not saying that we want to decrease in services. They're saying that they want to decrease in expenditures. That's a different issue.
And I, I would agree with that.
All I'm suggesting is that the town ought to take and determine from the citizens, do they want to see us provide the same level of services? Or should we take as a board and do a study that would suggest potential ways to reduce those services?
I, I just don't like the way it's worded. The, the way it's worded, it just plans to reduce town services. And I, and I don't think that that's the correct-
What's, what's the wording, what's the wording that would make it more palatable for the board in general, uh, as, for the majority of the boards?
Well, if anything, to see if the, the town would direct the board to conduct as, an assessment of the, of the current services being provided to the taxpayer, to see if they're adequate, um, and come back with that assessment by next town meeting. Just, or a, a referral, just on a report. I mean, we not, for a town our size, we're really not, certainly not providing, um, a premier level of service to our-
To read that, to me, it, it's saying, "We're gonna de- develop a plan to reduce services."
Right, right.
That's how it's reading, yes. It is reading that way.
And, and I'm, and I'm not in favor of that.
And, and, and to be fair, Jason flagged this the other day and said, "I don't know how to word this. This is confusing. It doesn't, it..." And so my thought was, well, I said, "Jason, leave it as it is. Let's have this conversation. Let's modify it at the meeting." Because ultimately today, Mr. Byron brought it forward. We all have an opinion of what it means. So let's come up with a wording that we can, that we can go forward with if, if we can.
I'd rather, in, in, in an article, if you do, if you're gonna do a capital improvement committee, why can't you do a community survey along with that capital improvement? Like was done in a certain other town that I knew. They coupled a survey of services along with the capital improvement plan. Um, we could pull that out of here and put that in the cap, ask the planning board to send along with that a survey of, of the people's, um, idea of their services, if they feel they're appropriate, if they like more, if they like less. I would rather see that than put it as a warrant article.
So just include the survey aspect that's part of the capital-
Right, as part of the capital improvement.
The capital improvement is for capital items. It's not for services.
I understand Frank, but it doesn't mean you can't ask them at the same time while you're asking them to fill out capital improvement, that you can send along another survey. By the way, we're conducting this survey of town services. Would you please align that? Kill two birds with one stone.
We're asking them to vote in six seventy-five: fifty-four is what it was, I guess. And that doesn't include, within the RSA, doing surveys on provision of services.
But does it say you can't?
And I think that mixing the two of them up deflates the issue away from, "Do we want, or do the citizens of Litchfield want us to reduce services?" You're basically taking this article and combining it, which-
No, I'm not saying put it in the other article.
Which obliterates any acknowledgement of trying to do a reduction.
Are you suggesting that when that committee is formed, this board of selectmen tasks them to do the survey?
Yes.
But not, not include it in the wording of the article?
Right, because this is very vague and all it says is reduce.
I mean, if we were to- The catalyst came in, the conversation was non-binding about reducing town services. And then everybody kind of hung, "Well, this is in, this department's in, this department's out," and all of that. All right? So it started collapsing under some of its own weight. Um, and then when you start adding examples, because, you know, it's vague because there's no plan. I mean, do you want me to write an article that says, "Are you in favor of closing the town clerk's office two days a week? Closing the solid waste facility one day a week? Not having police officers available after six P..." You know, like, you can't write an article that has all of that. It has to be more general, which leads to this notion of, if you really want to talk about reducing, you gotta develop a plan, find out if the people want you, put your attention there, and then bring that plan forward so they can understand what those pieces are. You can't put the choices in the article. And, you know, to be fair, should the board assess or study, well, that's what you're supposed to be doing. It's what we're all supposed to be doing here anyway. That, that article without an end direction of increase or decrease is kind of a hollow. Why bother asking the question? So that's, that's kind of where I'm struggling with capturing all of your opinions to get something to ask the voters.
See, when you do a survey or an assessment, you know, we've already had some of those done at a department level and we already know that we have level issues there. You know, i.e. PD is, you know, two offices short based on professional recommendations. So fire department is at that, you know, pitch point where it may not be appropriately staffed. Who knows, right? But asking the citizens, it- I mean, I like the idea of asking, but the question is, is what, you know, what's the action at the end?
It's too vague.
I, I, I'm, I'm with you on the vague part. I mean, do we, do we say, do we ask the citizens to, um, to, to instruct the board of selectmen to conduct an assessment of townwide services and develop? See, the question is, what's, what's, what's the goal, right? What's the action? The assessment's there, what are we gonna do with it? I mean, it comes out as reduction in services because that's how it originally started, but, you know, what happens if the survey comes back and says, you know, "I want this, I want that," and, and it's a high increase, but we know this town can't afford certain things?
But that's where we could tie to the capital improvement plan.
But the capital improvement plan doesn't affect, doesn't, won't affect, um, it, it will not affect, affect things like, uh, employees and resources.
No, I understand. But say, for example, they want a major-
They want transportation.
Right.
That's some important one now.
They want what?
Transportation. They want people, I've heard many people say to me, "Hey, I wish that we had a bus that come around and go to these different developments and so forth and pick them up." I said, "Do you know how much that would cost?" I said, "You'd have a whole bus for one co, one person to go over the air shower. That would be very-"
Forty thousand dollars a year for a school bus.
Oh, boy.
That's for, that's for four or five runs a day, so, yeah.
Now, can I ask a question? We're, we're taking a vote here. We're voting to include or not to include them in the warrants?
To, well, it's ultimately to include or not include. I mean, right now with the discussion whether the wording even makes sense, if, if, if there's a motion to take action, to not include it or include it, we can do that too. But so far, there's no motion on the, Jeff, there's no motion, right?
We accept the warrant article as stated.
Okay, motion's made to accept it as stated. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion fails with lack of a second. Anybody else want, anybody want to make an attempt to adjust the article?
Would we be smart to just do one service a year and it wouldn't be confusing? In other words, I think if we had anything that would increase hours or any sort, I would say the landfill or whatever you want to call it down there, uh, work down there. There's more people there that need more hours than any other thing I can think of. I mean, of course, like a bad storm, sure, you need it then, but you don't need it all the time. But something year round.
Well, like as Jason said though, Pat, maybe that's something we should be doing.
I'm sorry, what?
Maybe that's something we should be looking at year round anyway.
Well, the other day, the, the department head should be coming forward. If they're not, if they don't have the right label, right level of resources or right, either up or down, the department head needs to be coming forward. That's their job during the budgeting process.
Yep.
Um, I think the intent of the article is not necessarily to increase services. It's really to level set or reduce the services. And I think that's where we're all hung up on right now.
A tab.
So is there, is there a, a motion to, with new wording or anything else? Okay, hearing done.
So, if you're gonna say the board of selectmen to develop a plan to reduce town services, I'd just say within the departments of the town.
No. Reducing again.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Byron made a motion with the wording, "As stated." Jeff will collect that once we figure it out. Is there a second?
I second the discussion.
Mrs. Jewett, seconded. Discussion.
I think the, the idea is, is a reduction of services. Increasing services is quite honestly what the citizens expect us, or expect from us pretty much every year when we do a budget. In this particular case, I'm trying to propose to the citizens, "Are you of the opinion that we should be reducing the services or developing a plan to reduce those services?" Now, um, I'm not sure, you know, uh, putting forward a plan to consider all town services, increase, decrease, or whatever, makes sense. That's not what the question really is. The question is, do the citizens say we're giving too much services? And if so, should we reduce them?
So you, you just stated, "The citizens expect us to increase services every year we do the budget." I don't, this, this board and the budget has never really increased any services. At this point in time, what we're trying to do is maintain the existing level of services. We have not- Because ultimately, if we're gonna increase services, it requires us to change part timers to full timers and bring on full timers. And we haven't done that. Anything we've done that has been freestanding warrants.
Right.
Um, so I don't, I don't know that's the right statement, right? I mean, we've typically been running at the, at the point where we're trying to keep services and keep the ser- The outgoing faced services are being maintained. Yes, there are increased costs internally just to do the job, meaning, you know, with technology changes or just costs of water or different, different drivers. But we're not, we're not increasing the level of services to the people of the town.
Right.
We've been maintaining and we've been trying to keep it as-
And my question is to the citizens, is that what you want us to do? Or do you want us to reduce them? I mean, saying that we're gonna maintain services predisposes what- I mean, saying that we're gonna maintain services predisposes what, predisposes what your budget's gonna be with increases by cost of living and all that stuff.
Sure.
But it doesn't address the question, should we reduce services? Now, I know there was a, there was a suggestion made that it's the requirement or the responsibility of department heads to come and do that, but generally speaking, department heads are not typically going to come forward and say, we should reduce my span of control, just because that's the way people's innate personalities tend to work. And I'm not picking on any particular department, I don't want people thinking that. I'm just saying it in general, you know, and let some future board decide what those reductions would be, if that's what the citizens want.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of the modified motion, a modified amendment, sorry, the modified article? Say aye.
Aye.
Against? No?
No.
Opposed? I'm getting late now, abstaining, sorry. Motion fails four, sorry, fails two, three, zero. I'm all gummed up right now. Alright, so it will not be presented in the warrant. I think that concludes the warrant articles, right?
Uh, no.
No?
The board of selectmen going to be proposing a warrant article for cost of living allowances for the
That's the question. I'll take suggestions.
Can I jump in in the slight void there and say that the, one of the things we've been trying to do is move this wage plan idea forward? I've given you some plans, I've given you some costs of implementation, I would much rather see the board make movement on that and try to make a commitment to start shipping away at some of those positions. Asking and failing every year for a cost of living is not a good position for our employees to be in. You know, and I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Is something funny?
Yeah, it was funny.
Yeah, Mr. Garrett, if you can withhold your comment in or outbursts during the meeting?
Sure, I'll have public comment later.
That's fine, but that's when it's appropriate.
Yeah.
It's been frustrating, day to day, seeing that, I'm not, and also, at this point, a cost of living perpetuates a percentage on top of a wage schedule that we've, I'm hoping, have decided we need to move away from. If not, I've spent a lot of time in vain. So I had thought we were working on the wage plan approach.
That was, that was my thought too, I think we talked about that very early on.
I don't have a problem with that, but I want the board to understand that by not including that, you're sending a message to the employees, that's all.
Well, I don't, I think that the message to the employees are that we're also trying to address the actual wage plan, which hasn't been touched and hasn't been effectively working, and if we fix, if we address that, that does give them some hope that we're addressing their concerns.
However, you need to put money behind the wage plan. I'd rather see you ask for a COLA and see where it goes if you're not gonna put money behind the wage plan.
Yeah, so let's construct an article and, you know, the two, the wage plan adoption and correction and the funding for that are separate than the COLA. They're two freestanding actions. So we're not gonna get ourselves into any issues where we decide to support the wage, we approve the wage plan as we're working on, we've been working on for the last two years. We put aside money to deal with that to help implement it, that's one action, and then the COLA's a second action. Correct? They shouldn't get confused, correct?
I don't consider them the same, no. I think that they're separate issues. I think that unless people have looked at the wage plan, you know, they may wanna come back and discuss a COLA, but that's just me, so.
Well, I think the challenge is, the wage plan as is today, we've agreed in, we made a few, might have adjusted in the last meeting, we've agreed in concept, we, we, we're sort of off-topic now because it's actually one of the agenda items, but we had asked Jason to go back and figure out what the implementation cost would be over a two-year period, I think it was, so that we were not incurring a huge hit. If not, I mean, it's a small, in some ways, it's small amounts, but
No, I mean, it could, cost it out, it's not, because there are some of your positions that are well behind where market is. I mean, I took and said, okay, leave out, leave out individuals and personalities, basically take position in the scale and, you know, here's the service, drop somebody, drop that person in, you know, and I costed out, I came up with the cost of about over $115,000.
Mr. Chairman, can I respectfully suggest that we table the discussion on a warrant article for a COLA?
Till we get past
Go to the wage plan, and then we can bring that back up if that's the will of the board.
I think that still will work out fine. So let's, we're done with warrant articles, as is right now, let's proceed on the rest of the agenda. Year-end production, year, year, year-end projections.
We'll do, we're slated to do a meeting about encumbrances next week and look if there are some things we can take out. Projections are definitely a little tighter, you know, I'm running about 50,000 right now. Winter has not been kind to us. We've sort of, we've exhausted sort of my projections and then some there, so that has trended a lot higher, so.
So we originally projected a 70,000
Yeah, I was looking about 70, I'm down to about 50, so we'll see how things evolve from there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the ice that kills me. I'd rather have six inches of, I mean, honestly, I mean, our biggest cost has been ice, you know, because it's salt and equipment. Snow, you push it once and it's gone.
Yeah, that's true.
All right, moving on, I guess. No action there. Budget items, hydrants and regional associations. So Jason, on the hydrants, I know the, we've already voted the total amount we originally forecasted, and the budget committee, we were asked to explain the payment schedule. We went back to Penn and Chuck, we talked to them, we talked to the different folks of authority that gave us a schedule, and that schedule basically reduced by about $3,600 what we originally asked for the budget. The budget committee went into the budget and reduced it by that amount. So I'm assuming you're asking us, we're not, we're gonna accept it? Because we don't know what we do, so it is what it is, right?
Yeah, I mean, it, well, when I put this together, it was before that vote, you know, it's, the actual cost is gonna be about $3,600 less than our budget. However, when you look at that schedule I provided, there is a bubble next year of 312,000, it goes 312,977, and then it drops back in 2016 to 299,319, basically what we budgeted this year.
Right.
So you have a bubble. Now, when we talked about it before, I said, hey, if we're in the ballpark, I'd suggest you carry it over to the coming year. So instead, you're gonna, you can back off and then have a big number next year.
Well, but the problem is, is the budget committee, I shared that with the budget committee, I'm sort of, I'm willing to go back and ask them to open it up again, because every time I open it up, it becomes another issue, but the budget committee removed it. I explained that that $3,600, it was, you know, again, that we would carry for next year to take off the 17,000 and kind of lower it a little bit. They didn't agree with that, so they reduced it to that new level.
Do they understand there's a contract that we have with them?
Well, the contract is, it's gonna be 295,658 if everything pans out right.
Right, but we also have, what, 315 or something like that?
It's 312,977 the following year.
In the next year, yeah.
In 15.
In 15.
Yeah, so we have, we have a, we were just saying that, we took, we took an educated guess based on all the things going on at PUC, we came with 299 when we were, when we were, we weren't challenged, I just asked, can you help us understand the fees because it was all over the place? We went back, they gave us a, you know, an, you know, a month-by-month payment schedule out three years. So, and doing that math, we were $3,600 on the heavy side, they removed the $3,600. We did suggest that, leave it there just so that we can use that to pay into the following year to kind of remove that 17 increase to be about 14. They did not agree, so. So I don't think there's any action here, we've already taken, in the past, we don't, we don't revote it, so, unless there's a desire to do something different.
Well, if they've been presented with the numbers and they have decided not to utilize those numbers, we can do about it.
Okay, so the last one is, which hasn't been voted on by the, by the budget committee neither, is 4197.10, because we took an action to table it until this meeting. We had a very healthy discussion on the NHMA membership, and it was a split vote on whether or not to leave it funded or not leave it funded. So.
NHMA membership?
Yep.
Why would we even think of getting out of NHMA?
Mr. Byron had made the recommendation to reduce it, it was
No, I made a recommendation to eliminate it.
Eliminate, yeah.
And my rationale for making the motion to eliminate it is, we are no longer obligated to be members of NHMA in order to get our insurance through them. That has now gone away. We can freely purchase insurance from them or other vendors if the desire so lasts, so exists. And the amount of benefits we're receiving from NHMA, to me, doesn't justify the cost, which is 6,500, and from what I'm hearing, slated to go up in subsequent years even higher. So my thinking is, let's remove ourselves from NHMA and go from there. They, you know, have been forced by the Securities and Exchange Commission for the state of New Hampshire, whatever you wanna call those guys, to segregate themselves and divest themselves of the insurance portions and all of that stuff. And some of the staff and some of the services go into the various piecemeals and that type of thing, but their costs aren't changing. So I just do not see that we, as a town of Litchfield, are gaining any benefit from them through membership. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
I disagree. We use them on a daily basis, administrators, in most towns, we use their services, we use their free legal, when we don't wanna, we wanna try to conserve our legal budgets. They're available every day of the week for free legal consultation. I think it's a tremendous benefit for the town. And I think those of us that work with on a day-to-day basis find that that benefit continues. And they are not, it's the risk pool that has to divest a lot of this, it's not the municipal association, right? It's the two risk pools, the separate other areas of insurance. And I think that the town derives a lot of benefit for belonging to the municipal association, and there's, it looks out for the town's interests, and part of, one of the biggest areas it does is in the area of maintaining the revenues that we get from the state. And I, I don't know why we would ever not do that unless, I'm, let's put it this way, I'm comfortable with them helping us as towns. I know legislators are not happy with NHMA sometimes because we're trying to maintain at least some of the revenue stream from the state that has been dwindling lately. And so I think there's some issues there.
If you're inferring that I, as a state legislator, have a problem with NHMA, I can assure you 100% that's incorrect.
I didn't infer that, Mr. Byron.
I can assure you that, in fact, I've actually worked closely with NHMA to get some bills changed in the legislature, and Mr. Hoek is well aware of this, to make them more acceptable to the association as well as acceptable to towns like Litchfield. I just don't see us getting the benefits. You know, if you ask the question, okay, we've got free legal services, we asked the question over the last meeting, how often we've used it, and we haven't used it that much. Further, if we're going to increase the use of it, then I would like to see a concomitant decrease in the legal budget, so that we don't end up spending the money in the legal budget area.
Legal budget's already way down, already been reduced.
You have, the legal budget's a retainer, how do you know?
No, it's not a retainer, but we've reduced, we actually reduced the legal budget this year over last year significantly, because we're leveraging not only, you know, knowledge of Jason and his role and his past experience, but other sources like NHMA
Right, but until we have history, we wouldn't even know what to
So the current, right now, 4197.10 stands at $13,375. So.
So moved.
Right now, the last approved line from the board of selectmen
Right.
Is 13,375, which still includes the NMHA membership.
So I will make a motion that we, that the town of Litchfield will secede, if you wanna call it that, from NHMA, and reduce the amount of 4197.10 by the fee increase, which is, what is it?
69.29.
69, 69.29 or 62.99?
That'll be the bottom line at that point.
69.29 or whatever it is.
Will be the new bottom line. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the reduction, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstain? Motion
Motion failed.
Two, two, one, which is where we were last time. So it stays 13,375. And that's what will be brought to the board of, budget committee. Okay. All right. Before we get to wage plan, can we do the 102 stuff?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Let's just report on that.
We had services from NRPC running traffic, we said we were gonna run it again in October, so we wanted to, you know, start, get some of the construction work through. They passed along their data report unchanged, average speeds were the same, average speed 44 miles an hour northbound, southbound average was 45. The 85th percentile speed, which is sort of the measurement that is used to argue for setting a speed limit, was at 50 and 53 percent. So the data was not different than what we saw in July, and so the argument is, the speed is appropriate, the posted speed limit is appropriate for the road, and we would have a nearly impossible time asking for a speed limit lower than what is posted.
So, just so the public can recall, I think it was Mrs. Stewart brought it forward, that she felt that the speed on that road was too high or in excess. And so two studies have indicated that it's posted properly, and there is no concern.
Well, there may be a concern, but the problem is, based on all of the data, there is no way that we
It's a state road, we can't
To meet the state test for it, based on sort of the engineering numbers that they look at, so.
It's not necessarily the speed that's so fast, it's so many exits and entrances and so forth along there that, it just, I think that he's asking a trouble, I really do. I just can't believe that the state doesn't do something about it. I've seen other places that seem worse than that, and not, not as bad as that, ours is worse than theirs are, and lower and everything else. It just doesn't make sense.
Okay. Moving on the agenda, wage plan. So just as, we already kind of covered a little bit of earlier, just as a reminder, we went through this in depth a month ago, or shorter. The assumption was, the feeling at the time was that we were somewhat in agreement in all the levels and sets and so on and so forth, and we asked Jason to come back with a schedule or a plan or cost assessment on how we would implement this in a prior, in a new year. So that's where we're at at the moment. So Jason, if you wanna walk us through it?
Yeah, like I said, I took the positions that, in the ranks that we had, within the bands that we created, I sort of casually dropped everything in. I mean, in theory, you know, we you know, we set this up, we have a beginning, a mid, and an end, and there's an analytical process to get there. So I did not go and evaluate every position and place them in a week. You know, I sort of did, okay, off the top of my head, where people are, years of experience, where would they fit, period? And tried to kind of get into a ballpark on that. Obviously, looking at that sort of initial assessment, I had a couple positions that current wage was higher than the schedule would impute. So it's sort of red circle those people and there may not be a lot of movement there. I also had a handful of positions that were well behind what market comparables were.
No, Jason, when you say market comparables, we're talking about municipal, municipal like-for-like.
Municipal, as like-for-like as we can get. And so, you know, I'm also realizing that you wouldn't be making up that kind of difference in one calendar year anyway. But I, but for sake of argument, said, what's your outer margin? If everything started as of January 1st and everybody was in the slot that I dropped them in, it had an annual carrying cost of $116,000. Okay? Obviously not realistic. So you start backing it off. And obviously, in some cases, you would need to gradually move the people in their position to an appropriate place. And, you know, some of these might be well recalibrated, I aim too high, too low. So, you know, started backing off a little bit and saying, okay, well, we would cap some people so there wouldn't be a huge increase over prior year. And how do you phase this in over a few years? And ultimately, what it all comes down to is a notion of if we're going to commit to a new schedule, then one of the things we need to do is pick a number and then start putting people on the path to get there. You know, I took a modified approach and came up with a three-quarter year cost of about $37,847. Probably still higher than you want to go to. But, you know, looking at how do we, how do we make a plan and get there working? And so that's why I come back to you and say, I think, based on these numbers, what I'm looking at is, if you're generally comfortable with the approach, you need to pick a number. And then we need to come up with a meaningful implementation plan over the next year to get people moving in this plan.
Jason, just a question for you. And you've got on your spreadsheet three slash four, and I heard you say three-quarter year.
Three-quarter year.
And I wanted to know whether that was three quarters a year or three or four-year type?
Oh no, three-quarters of a year. That sort of a...
You'd be implementing, not the full year would be...
Right. Nothing would start January 1st. So it would start with an April 1st.
You wouldn't do all at one, at one same point. You'd actually spread it out throughout the year.
Right. And that's, that, again, I took, because I, I needed snapshots in time. I took a full year cost. I took a three-quarter. What if you put everybody in a movement on April 1? The reality is, if you set a number, we will gradually start phasing some people in. And some people may see more than one change. You know, you might see something in the spring, something in the fall. For some of these people, we have a larger gap to close. You know, all within a target budget. I mean, I looked at this and said, my plan looks nice on paper. I know, I know this is not achievable in year one. So the next best way to get there is give me a number and we'll come up with the best strategy to make it work.
From your perspective, you mentioned that a moment ago, that you would do this over the course of that three-quarters of a year. Are you talking of doing it on an anniversary date? Or are you talking of doing it, I mean, to me, it would make sense doing it based on historical change, April 1st.
Mm-hmm.
For everybody. So anybody who changes, changes April 1st and then...
Most likely for...
For the changes to bring people in line with what you're suggesting.
Yeah. For, for people who, who have, who, you know, we put together a plan and they have one change, I'd say April 1. We may have some people that have more ground to gain, in which case, you know, I'd look at like April 1 and October 1. You know, in the transition. I mean, some of these, it's going to take you, it's going to take you probably a couple of years to get to where we think we want to take it.
The, the other option is that you do everybody by a certain amount, dependent upon maybe adjustment to how you got to get them there. And then what you end up doing is just doing it once in the year. And those people who catch up, drop off that list and you just continue on with, you, you know what I'm saying?
And, and actually, if you look at my second, if you look at the second spreadsheet, I actually...
That's what I was looking at.
I actually ran that kind of number. You know, in this case, I said, okay, it would be the, the target wage, or, in this case, I just threw, I threw eight in for the moment, of not more than 8% greater than the previous, than the previous wage. Because, I mean, you have some, some positions that are significantly off. And, you know, it's also not realistic to think about. I mean, in some cases, I realize eight is probably a hard number for some people to swallow, too. You know, and I get that. So, but you're right, Frank. You pick a number, 3, 5, 7, 8, whatever it is, drop it in and you apply it accordingly to get there.
He said you're right. It don't really...
No, I just wanted him to say Selectman Byron.
Let the record show that Selectman Byron is right again.
But it took them all the way to nine o'clock tonight.
Two minutes and a half.
All right. So what's, what's the board's pleasure as far as, I mean, we've been working on this plan for almost two years, if not longer, actually. I think it's the first thing I started when I got on board, and that's almost four years ago. I think we have a reasonable plan. We have reasonable numbers. It all matches up. Yes, there's a cost associated with it. I think if we do it as a sort of a gradual plan in, it helps, you know, get there. I think it does address some of our employee concerns because a lot of these employees, you know, the ones that are, they're under market or not under market, you know, I think it addressed some of those levels, too. And I think it will start removing some of that pressure. I don't know how, I mean, 37,000, I mean, if we were able to...
Now, bear in mind, let me give you a couple of things to bear in mind on top of this, which will make the picture somewhat bleaker. One is, we talked, we also talked about married with this, a longevity payment plan.
Yep.
And I think that is really important to make sure we retain in this. At the moment, we have a reasonable group of people who have served the town for 20, 30 years and are kind of maxed on our regular pay scale. So the, you know, moving them in a new scale, I don't have a lot of room to move them anyway. So, you know, the biggest challenge we have had with the past couple of years without a cost of living increase has been, they've stopped moving through steps. So it's our longest-serving people who have given 20, 30 years of service to this community who've had the flat wages. People who have been under that have moved through steps. So you have that number in there. And remember, too, the numbers I gave you are wage-only numbers. Obviously, depending who it is and what department, there's taxes and benefits associated with that. So, you know, there, whatever top number you give me, I got to deduct out of that how I spread, spread it out to cover the true cost.
No, you got to increase it to that.
Well, I, yes, I'm using the opposite theory. I'm, I'm using the theory that, that what you're going to do is you're going to give me a cap. Here's your number, Jason. You are not to exceed this number. Come back and work all the pieces and parts to not exceed this number and move us on this plan.
Now, just for clarity's sake, and I'm stating this for everybody's knowledge, I guess, that also is going to create a situation where people are locked into their current salary. I want people to understand that.
It, ones that are either already above, above market.
If they're, if they're red circled and...
That's right.
Also, if these ranges change in the next two years, if they're still above that salary, they still are locked.
Correct. That means the town, in some cases, the town's been very generous as far as what we, what we pay for the service.
But I mean, wouldn't, I mean, that's a fair, um, representation of the market value. So, like you said, Mr. Chair, I mean, they would have to understand that, that means that they were doing well all along. And so they, other people that weren't doing so well would be brought to where they're supposed to be. So I don't see that that's...
No, I think we just need to be aware of it. And I think that those folks that are impacted by it need to probably see the data and understand it, too.
Right. I mean, as long as you understood that this survey was done and this is a market survey.
And I think the other...
Not, not figures brought out of the sky.
And the data, Jason, just for clarity, the numbers we use are towns of equal size and character and all that.
They're, yeah.
As close as we can get. I mean, we only have a limited pool.
Right. I mean, we get the report, the LGC, it had been the LGC, which would now be Municipal Association report. So they run it, I guess, every two years now. So we took the 12 data for towns. I think their gradation is like 5,000 to 10,000. Tried to match wherever possible. So.
Yeah. I mean, we have positions that don't, you know, that don't really exist in those plans, neither. But those are the ones that back there.
And that's where you find kind of benchmark positions. And then obviously, we know in our own organization sort of where we see similar positions. So, you know, that, there are times where there was, you know, there was maybe a movement to a Litchfield band one step higher or lower than the market data might imply because of how we view and add responsibilities or don't add responsibilities to that position.
Okay. So I think we need to make a motion. Well, I guess the, the action here is, how do we fund it?
I think you put it into the 14 budget.
Mm-hmm.
So you make a motion that says Jason's looking for a, I'll call it a dollar cap, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you're suggesting, at least according to your exercise here, that one dollar cap would be 37,847?
Um, yeah, I wouldn't hold that constant because that, that also doesn't include the longevity. And I'm not really going to ask for 42,000.
Well, let me ask another question then related to that, is that some of these people who have longevity, we should only be paying longevity, we've already paid longevity to some people.
We have?
Nope.
No, we haven't.
Yeah, we have. We should, yes, we have.
Who? Well, I shouldn't say who, but... Not in my, not in my time. We've, we've tried to...
Nothing supplemental. No, we've never, we, we don't have anything supplemental for longevity. We have people that are capped out at that last step.
No, we have a 20-year? I thought we had a 20-year longevity.
No, we, we don't have an annual. They're...
I'm not saying the annual.
No, they're at whatever bucket they're in. We go like 1 to 10, and then we go 20, and then 30, and...
Well, wait a minute. Are you saying that when they hit the 20-year mark, we paid them longevity and talk about...
Well, maybe I'm misunderstanding. What are you calling a longevity in here?
Yeah. I'm, I, what I see, what we've talked about is an, is an annual amount that gets paid, a fixed amount based on years of service.
Well, like the state does.
Right. Like the state does.
So I'm, I'm interpreting longevity as being a one-time, not, not as a permanent hit every year.
Okay. And...
And, and if you're going to do a permanent hit every year, that's going to defeat this whole thing. Because what will happen is, you'll eventually drive the person right off, right off the grade they're in.
Well, the thing is, I believe, Frank, if, like the state does, it's just a one-time, I've got other names for you that I don't want to use on, it, it's, it's a lump. It doesn't go, get attached to the salary schedule. It's a one-time payment.
But he's not, he's suggesting this happens every year?
Yeah.
And that's...
Well, no, 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 one time each year.
Right.
So in other words, say for example, if you've reached, like I believe at the state, if you've reached 20 years, you're not getting annual increases of cost, well, you may, if they vote cost of living.
Yeah.
But you're off the step chart, but you do get a longevity payment of like $1,000 a year if you've been there 25 years. And you get 1,800 if you've been there 30 years. And you get 2,100 if you've been there 35 years.
Hang on. Let me make sure I understand. So I'm asking a question to clarify. So if my salary is $50,000, and I'm making up a number now, and I hit my 20-year...
You'll make 51,000.
Okay. So do I get paid the whole year on 51,000? Or do I only get the $1,000 bonus?
Only the $1,000 bonus. That, I assume that's what you're saying, right?
The way it says here is it'll be paid annually on July or around July 15th.
Right.
One time.
In other words, it's not in the salary schedule. The state system on, like, the second payday in December...
But the salary in my, in my example would stay at $50,000 going forward.
Correct. And then you would only have longevity payments once a year. You wouldn't be getting any increase.
Unless, unless the grade changed.
Unless the cost of living was voted.
Or the grade changed.
That's correct. That's correct.
Well, there is no cost of living in this.
Right. There isn't.
Right. I mean, I assume that's what you're saying. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Because this is what we're looking at also, to mirror the state system, which doesn't tie into your overtime, doesn't tie into your holidays.
Right. It doesn't come out.
One-time end-of-the-year payment each year for longevity, which is a true longevity bonus.
All right. Mr. Byron, are you making a motion?
Not at this moment. So, so I just want to be clear on, you've got longevity points of 10 years, 15 years, and 20 years, right?
Mm-hmm.
And what is the quantity that would be given as a bonus?
510, 750 at 15, 1,000 at 20.
Okay.
That, right now, with your current employee demographic, that's nine employees.
I'm trying to understand, there's a fraction of dollars in here if you're using whole numbers.
What? Oh, how I have fractions? Part-timers are prorated for the regular number.
Right. We were talking about part-timers, so...
So you've got 20 years part-time.
Right.
And you're prorated that amount.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And are you also prorating, no, you'd be using that as a dollar per hour basis, according to the grades?
Yeah. So, and, and, you know, if you look at the straight wage cost, obviously with no taxes, benefits there, it's kind of a moving target. If you're looking for a, okay, what's a stake in the ground? Does the starting point, here's something to think about. Your Article 7 for the bargaining unit has a price of 44,562. A very simplistic argument could be, use that same target.
Why?
Because it's a very simplistic argument. Well, I mean, I, I'm trying to give, I'm trying to give you a number, a number. I don't expect you to fully fund the scenarios I put out, nor, that's why I didn't finish the scenario. These are all the tax costs related to it. I am expecting you need to come up with a number that you're comfortable with that is less than whatever I've shown there. And then we come up with an implementation plan to make it work. Because I, you can't fully fund the whole thing. I think the one scenario I put together, I'm not, I don't think it's reasonable to pursue fully funding that in year one.
I don't think we can afford to do it.
Right. Exactly. So, you know, that...
So if we gave you, if we gave you an amount, I think there's two actions here, right? There's the longevity side. I think that could stand on its own.
Yep.
But if we gave you an amount for the implementation of the plan, would you be able to come back and tell us how that would get implemented?
Yeah.
I mean, who would get, what timing? Because I think at some point, you're going to get a dollar amount and, and you have to back yourself into that dollar amount. That means wages and benefits.
Yep.
And it's obviously not going to be all 20 employees or all 10 employees, whoever it is. It's going to be a fraction of those. And, and I'm assuming the ones that are under, you know, that kind of...
Yeah. With, with the target, you know, then I would come back with a schedule with real numbers and, and timing as well. Like I said, I mean, I think the notion of doing as many in one shot as possible is ideal. We may also look at, you know, in some cases, doing two steps to stretch some of those dollars a little further. And... dollars a little further, um, and, yeah.
And Mr. Byron, your suggestion was just to, to take a line and add it to Personnel Administration and just add it there in the budget?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And send that to the Budget Committee as a recommendation. The other thing that you're going to have to do, well, you're going to have to have, you may have to have two lines, I don't know, if you want to have the salary line or the line for the salary changes and then a separate one for longevity.
I think I'd put them, I'd put them all together.
Okay, and then, um... That's going to also trickle through to any benefits lines.
Right, but if you put it in Personnel Administration, that works very nicely for me. The theory will be that we will, when you see it, well, you'll, it'll be underspent, that line will be underspent because it'll be reallocated out every place else. The plan that we put together will be the separate sheet that will show you where all the money is going.
Okay. Find the budget here. So, we're going to fund, a fund that plan that we've agreed on, and we're going to put it in Personnel Administration. So, forty-one fifty-five, and we're going to add it to, where?
The new line that's going to be Wage Plan Implementation. Don't ask me a number yet, but it'll be in there somewhere.
No, I'm struggling, I'm just struggling now with what, what the number should be, what's fair and... If we got sixty-seven, and... I'll, I'll make a motion that we add to forty-one fifty-five for Wage Plan Implementation, a dollar amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion.
Where did you come up with thirty thousand?
So, I, in there, it's sixty-seven hundred, sixty for the longevity, and then, you know, about twenty, you know, twenty-two whatever thousand to try to implement the plan. I, I don't think we, I mean, the numbers look like thirty-seven plus six, looking at forty thousand dollars. I just don't think we can afford forty, forty thousand dollars in the first year, but I, I want something that's going to be palatable, you know, that the Budget Committee can get behind and allow us to put this, this, this recommended plan and get our folks moving in the right direction again. So, it was, it's a swag. If you have a better number, I, I'm certainly open for a better number. I just, you know, trying to live within some means, so... And Jason, I know that doesn't allow you to do everything.
That's fine. I was not expecting, I mean, if, if you go, I, that's a number that I think we can make reasonable progress on.
It's, right, it's what I think we can afford. And again, it's, it's a swag. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero zero. So, I, at our next meeting on January second, I believe, I'll ask to have this reopened. I'll explain that we've adopted a new pro, plan, this is the fund that plan.
Have we adopted the policies yet?
So, we adopted the schedule. I don't, you know, that's a good question.
I move to adopt the plan.
Well, I'm not adopting until I see the policy, so...
What do you mean? What, what, what...
What policy are we talking about? You're talking about the employee manual, about the, the...
This plan and the employee manual, yes.
Well, then, if we're going to fund this, can't we adopt the pay plan part? Because we've just voted to fund it.
Yeah, and we've, we've...
I, that's why I say, I move to adopt the pay plan part so that it would be, you know, why, why move to fund it if we don't adopt it? That part of it. I understand what you're saying about putting it in the personnel plan, and I happen to agree with you.
Right.
But I'd like to at least adopt that part that we were talking about so that the vote to fund it in the Budget Committee would be appropriate as...
But I have no idea what you're adopting. I guess what my point is, is if you adopt something that's going to influence employee personnel policies, then that's fine. All I'm saying is that gives you the, that gives you the, um, the outline of the plan, how it works and everything else. Because I, I can assure you that you're going to be asked how the plan will function and work, and where is it in the policy manual?
Sure, but my only intention is, in order to bring an amount to the Budget Committee, I, I think it's a normal progression that we should adopt the pay wage plan update, that portion of it, and I would move to do that.
So, you're only proposing, Mr. Selectman Lemire, and I have other words for you, to adopt the grid that Jason's put together? That's all you're adopting?
Yes.
I'm going beyond that and suggesting that we need to adopt the policy.
Right, and certainly we can do that at, at another time, but to just get beyond what we've been talking about for a while. And in order to bring a number to the Budget Committee, I would just like to adopt that grid, and I will move that.
So, do I have a second? I, I'll second it because, quite frankly, we've had this discussion. And we've had this discussion about how we implement it, the rate, the doll, how we would actually implement the increases going forward, and I agree that we have to now modify the personnel policy to take all that and put it in there. But we, we've got a, we've got a, we've got a ways, today we have a step program that is there. This will replace that step program, and then there's factors in there that, how we implement it, what's the review cycle going to be, what's, how, how we fund it going forward. Those are all things we've already talked about, and we've all agreed within concept. We all agreed upon those, that's how we get to this point. So... I mean, we struggled, last couple of years, just how do we fund it? And we finally, at least we've got a moving forward plan, funding seems, what, similarly, seems to be reasonable. We know we're going to do the eight percent separation, we're going to do the implementation over a couple of years. We understand how the, how the increases will happen going forward. It's no longer just a given, it's, it's based on performance and where they are in longevity and all that. And yes, you're right, we have to modify the personnel policy. But we have to at least get the plan approved so we can go forward.
That was my move.
And I second it. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero zero. Okay. Now, going back to one of the things we kind of tabled during the warrant discussion, is the separate action of a COLAR. Does this board want to bring forward a COLAR in light of the, what we're trying to do from an overall pay plan?
I thought it was one or the other.
I thought we talked, that's how it was going to be, one or the other.
And that's my, that was, that was my, that was my understanding, too, and also my intent.
Yeah.
I, I...
Do you think we're asking too much?
I think I'm comfortable that if we adopt the plan, that we don't need to do a COLAR.
I agree.
Maybe this year, maybe another year.
Yeah, I mean, if we study, if we find out that the market didn't support that, well, that's different, but I, yeah, I...
Okay, so I'm seeing no action on our COLAR. All right, um, moving on, other items, the 2014 holiday schedule. And just to remind the board, we follow the state schedule, so that is all we're doing is republishing.
Yeah.
Well, the only thing, one is, Veterans Day is Tuesday, November eleventh.
Okay. Is it?
Is it?
It was Monday this year.
Ah, okay.
That's part of why, yeah, this is part of the time base.
Twenty fourteen is Tuesday.
Yep, it's on a Tuesday. So, make that correction, Jason?
Yep.
Live?
I move to accept.
Second.
Motion made to accept the...
As amended.
Yep, 2014 holidays as amended and seconded by Mr. Bork. Um, this, this, these holidays are for the non-bargaining unit employees only, so we're clear on that. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero zero. Okay, Selectmen Reports. Anybody have anything to report?
I got a nice note tonight. Dear Mrs. Jewett and my hometown, thank you once again for thinking of me. My mom said you delivered the package to see yourself. Sorry I was not there to receive it in person. I thank you and the town for always keeping me in your thoughts. It's my honor to serve you, my hometown and our great country. Thank you, Sergeant Shane Breen, United States Army. We delivered them last Saturday morning, ended up all day, just about, and I got stuck in the snow, too, so I was looking for a good man to help me. And I felt disappointed we had as little as we had in the boxes this year, but I certainly was very proud when I saw three of the different fellows that were home on leave then and all. And it's real evident that the parents and the fellows themselves are happy. So, again, I'd like to thank everybody that donated.
And we'd like to thank you for all the work you've done for, for that program.
It's the same, Mr. Chairman, I think that, um, Mrs. Jewett, thank you, just on behalf, I think, of everyone in town for your efforts. What you've been doing over the years has been remarkable for several agencies, several, and, and I, I think you must derive a tremendous amount of satisfaction with the hours that you've put in. And I, for one, I, and I'm, I'm sure it's reflected. Tom White, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the efforts that you've put in, because some of us just can't and others, you know, and wish we could and...
See, I can do this, but I can't do something else.
So appreciate it.
Frank does all this research and all.
You do a fine job, Mrs. Jewett. Thank you.
I enjoy it. It's wonderful to help people.
Anything else? Um, just one note, I do want to, Budget Committee meeting's been going really well. We pretty much wrapped up most of the town business. We're heavy into the school side. Obviously, the town is dealing with some of the stragglers. We typically deal with the end of the year, some adjustments, the default, and the final bottom line, which we'll get to soon enough. But it's been really good experience overall. I'd also like to recognize Chief Fratzl for receiving the Chief Fire Officer Designation from the Center of Public Safety Excellence Commission. That was, that's something that I write up, I think it's due, public recognition, and appreciate all he does for, for the department, and congratulations on the designation. That's it. Any, nothing else from anybody else?
No, the fire department receives an award.
No, not really.
Oh, you're talking about the Facebook thing?
Yeah, fire department is apparently receiving a box of cell phone cases.
It's, it is the...
Which was going into this massive news story in the Telegraph.
I, I saw it in the Telegraph, and I'm like, what do we get? It was just like, it was like fire protection stuff, did we get gear? It's like millions of dollars they talk about. And then, you know, as I peel back and I send a note to the chief, and Jason's like, oh, that's just a box of phone covers or something like that. I'm like, really? But, you know. And when you see, when you see one of our engines on front paper in the paper and all that, you got to go, this is going to be a big award. But, you know, we appreciate all, obviously, anything that helps defer costs, it's always something we want to look into. All right, moving on to items moved from consent. There was one item that was moved, which is the, uh, the poll permit, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so, poll permit is in here in our consent folder, well, which we pulled out, I think, but, Mr. Byron, you asked for it to be removed?
That is correct.
Do you want to explain why?
Yes.
Please proceed.
It's quite simple.
Please proceed.
The Comcast, I believe it is, is asking for the installation of a pole on the side of Route 3A. Litchfield Board of Selectmen do not control the right-of-way for Route 3A. I'm not sure how or why we can grant permission for them to install a pole, and that's state property.
Because we grant poll licenses on all roads through town, because that, the aerial route is your, is your ability to grant permits. We, we grant, we grant them all along the roads, whether they're state or town roads. It's not about the corridor of the road, it is the notion of granting a poll.
It's the first time I've ever seen a poll permit come in.
Really?
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 Really.
I mean, you, you guys did poll permits within the past year or two on 3A for PS&amp;H.
Yeah.
Yeah, remember?
We did.
We do them on Route...
On 3A for PS&amp;H?
Yeah.
Yeah, PS&amp;H. We do them on Route 4, Frank, for all ages.
Okay.
So, um...
We collect taxes on it, too?
Uh, we collect a poll permit, a license fee. The fact that this is a Comcast one is kind of tricky, so stay tuned on that. We probably will be collecting taxes at some point on it.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the poll permit for Comcast.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Byron.
Yes.
Further discussion?
Seconded by Mrs. Jewett.
Oh.
That was thirded.
I didn't say anything, so I'm not sure how you got me a seconded.
I didn't, oh, I'm sorry.
Sounds like me.
Sorry, seconded by Mr. Lemire, thirded by Mrs. Jewett.
My twin brother.
Yeah, you guys are the change order, you're both ears left and right.
I can see Brent through, I can see Brent right now through the ears.
Thanks.
Oh, boy.
Oh, that really was a nice slam. All right, all right, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero zero. I believe, I sign, Brent sign.
I'll sign.
Is that your signature?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
You're not the only, I'm not the only one.
I don't even see a K in here. If I were, this is, this is, never mind. Mrs. Jewett and Mr. Byron, I guess. All right, that covers the items moved from consent. There was no other items or no other business, right? I didn't miss anything, right? Okay, cool. Considering we have public sitting in the room, I will open the floor for public input. I will remind the, um, the public that five minutes time, there's going to be a five-minute time limit if I could, because it's the late hour.
Chris Pasucci, 12 Colonial.
Merry Christmas, Chris, how are you?
Merry Christmas, thanks. I didn't start watching the meeting till eight o'clock, but enough interest to me to come here, so I'm glad, even though this public input is not an official public input.
We don't really need to stress that, but go ahead.
I'm glad you opened it up. I want to give my opinion, which I believe is rooted in fact, and I'm going to state something that is clearly obvious but never really discussed the way I'm going to say it. This, I think it's pretty well-known now, at least watching from eight o'clock on, I don't know anything before that, that this board as a whole knows the opinion and the desire all too well of the voters of this town, which is why you will go and reach to far extents to prevent giving the voter a vote on certain issues. It seems like you will try hard to circumvent the voter and not allow them to offer their opinion. I know you say, which is true, they can come here anytime they want and speak, but we also know, and you guys know this, too, not many people feel comfortable coming here and speaking about certain issues. But when I heard that a tax cap, which would take a three-fifths to pass, it's a lot of people, that this board would not allow it to go to the voters, um, that tells me you are afraid to hear what the voter has to say. And I think you also know what the voter will say if you allow them to vote, but yet you will not allow them to even vote on that. A simple one, do you want to save some money? Maybe, possibly, advisory, look into cutting a few bucks by maybe, on the off chance, cutting a few hours. You wouldn't even allow that, because you guys know better. You guys know that this is what you need or want, and it doesn't matter what the voters want, not even so much that you can even ask them. You don't care. want, not even so much that you can even ask them, you don't care, but I think you know what they would say, which is why you won't allow them to vote, and that's advisory, that has no bearing, because just like the 2003, 2004 warrant for the school, you could say, ah, it doesn't matter, it's only advisory, you could've even ignored it if they said yes, but yet, pay increases, you clearly said, well, you went to the voter, they keep saying no, so what are we gonna do? Let's not ask them anymore, let's just put it in there, because they're too dumb, they don't know, they don't know what's best, it's only their money, this board knows what's best and how to spend their money, so let's, uh, put it in there, let's get it right in the budget and get it in there, and then we'll get it into default, and they'll have no say in the matter. Mr. Byron, you did say, when Mr. Brunel was talking about, you know, the department heads had to come, come to you, I think you're a human nature, nobody's gonna come and say, I mean, none of you guys here are gonna go to your boss and say, hey, I'm, I wanna take a pay cut, you know, I'm really, a few hours here or there, you don't need me, cut my pay, maybe cut my benefits a little bit, that just doesn't happen, that is something that you guys do need to look into. Now, I'm not here saying that we should cut services, I'm just talking about the fact that you guys won't even allow the voters to voice an opinion, because again, you know what's best. You said, talking about the pay raises, that you guys now just put right in there without asking the voter, you said, you, you, you don't believe you could, or Mr. Brunel says, I don't believe we could afford to fully fund it, but you said, we can afford thirty thousand. Now, who's we? It's, it's you guys, it's not we, we are the voters. Now, the voters, if you put it on a warrant and convince the voters and say, hey, voters, do you think you could afford thirty thousand? Again, I'm not saying it's not deserved, I'm not saying they're not worth every dollar they make, I'm just telling you that there is a huge difference between public and private world, the public and private world certainly does collide when it comes to issues like this, I know you guys say, ah, we're running a business, the town's a business, well, it is, but you, you choose to run it like a business when it's convenient, and you choose to ignore the real world when it's convenient. The real world, when employees, especially now, might, they might be getting raises, but yet, they have to contribute or they get cuts in their benefits that more than eat up their raises, so they might get a one or two percent raise, but they'll lose three percent deductible or contribution to the health plan, that's real world. Now, of course, there are some people here that have very good jobs that are still making more money, but the point is, you need to understand, when you say, we can afford, you don't wanna ask, and the point is, you don't know if we could afford it, there are people in this town living on fixed incomes, Mrs. Jewett speaks to those people a lot of times, let the people voice their opinions, stop taking the choice away from the voters, don't be afraid of what they have to say, the more you resist that, the more there's gonna be the back and forth, the school went through this years ago, and I'm, and I'm afraid the town's gonna go through it too if you, if you keep doing this. Then we get to the COLA, I got one more thing, Mr. Brunel, and then I'll, I'm done.
One minute.
You know, Mr. Lemire says, oh, we gotta see, will the market support the COLA? What's the market? There is no, the market is, is this board that sits at this table, you guys decide, put a COLA in, why not? Because the market, if you ask the voters, put it in a warrant this year, see if the market will, will, will support a COLA, but please, don't insult the voters by saying the market will, will support it, it's, it's you guys, you choose to put it in the budget or not, because you don't choose to give the voters a choice. Again, last thing I'm gonna say, I'm not here to say who deserves a raise, I think everybody deserves a raise, we all work hard, the town folks work very hard, they all deserve a raise, but when they get a raise, the money comes out of the pockets of the taxpayer, and I think they deserve a say. Thank you.
Mr. Garrett?
Jason Gertl, I have a pair.
You have limited to five minutes, and I'd also like to remind you that while you attend this meeting, professionalism would be, would be asked, the outbursts in the back of the room and comments that are not called for really isn't what I wanted to have in the-
Did I make, I didn't make a comment? I laughed, I snickered.
You snickered when the town employee was speaking, and as much as, as much as it may have been funny to you, it still was disrespectful.
Understand, just like it was disrespectful for Mr. Lemire to read his computer while Chris was speaking. No tax impact using end-of-year funds, if you put a warrant article there that funds the warrant article or reduces taxes with those funds, I guarantee that the taxpayer will choose to reduce their taxes, so there is no funding with zero tax impact, if you chose to return that money, you would reduce people's taxes, it's not government's role to provide charity, it might be this town's, I was quite offended at Mr. Lemire's assumption or his ashamedness of this town for not providing as much as other towns, when he has no idea what the public citizens in personal charity donate out of their own goodness of their own heart, just because we don't believe that it's government's role to do that on our behalf, so I was quite offended by that, that remark. This town is very charitable, I just think you can ask Mrs. Jewett that people always come and donate. The road agent, perception of the voter, Mr. Brunel, you're worried about the perception of the voter, well, I can guarantee you, the perception of the voter, when you don't let them vote on things, has much greater impact, and then when you have a warrant article that allows you, you had twelve hundred people at, at, at an election on a ballot, say no to something, but then you can come back and maybe get fifty at a special meeting to push something through that you want with the police contract, okay, that's the special meeting, it's like, it's like a deliberative session, that causes mistrust amongst people, because they went to the voting box and said no, and perhaps, for whatever reason, don't realize that there's a special meeting to undo what they just said, that, sir, is what causes a perceptual issue, go ask the school how well that works, they've stopped doing those special meetings for that reason. I do want voters to constrain government, because we don't trust what goes on here, because what happens is exactly what Chris spoke about, you won't give us the opportunity, you, you keep it for yourselves, that is mistrust, trust the voter, obviously we trusted you to vote you in, you're okay with that, I've heard that the whole night, well, the voters voted us in, they want us to do these things, well, perhaps the voter wishes something else, too, but you won't give them that option, you're happy to take their vote. The ballot box is where it happens, I heard the best control of government is the ballot box, well, when we vote no on the ballot box, you do have the right, but we voted no for two new police cars in the budget last year, but they found their way into the budget anyway, because you have that right to do it, however, it causes mistrust, because people say, it was in the budget, how did they do that? That's animosity, and I know there's animosity versus direct democracy, there was so much angst in Mr. Lemire's voice versus direct democracy, my God, man, that is what foundation of our country, go back and reread that, or go back and re-watch that movie, I suggest you do, because the, the contempt to the voter in this room this evening was unbelievable. Mr. Pasucci mentioned that, a survey of two hundred votes at a, during, during the planning board's CIP says nothing, twelve hundred voters plus at a voting box, at the voters' box, that tells you something, it's real, two hundred people that chose to answer a questionnaire is not real, voters apparently are smart enough to elect you, but not smart enough to vote for themselves, the free legal advice, Mr. Pasucci would tell you, the free legal advice that Mr. Lemire so covetly holds will also tell him that two police guards don't find their way into the default budget, direct from the NHMA, we'll see if you love them then. Last page.
You need to wrap it up.
Alright, I'm gonna do it. In every job I've had, there's never been automatic raises, except for when I was in the military, the most deserving are our souls out there in the desert, yet, they don't get a, a raise every year, they're, they're on steps, but it's every two years, and they top out, and they don't get longevity bonuses, they are the most deserving of our public employees, not to say the ones we have aren't, but even they don't get what we're providing ours, thank you.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, closing the floor for public comment. At this point, that concludes our meeting, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, move, Mrs. Chairman.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We will be adjourned at nine forty. Everybody have a great Christmas and a good Happy New Year.